Okay, yeah, my brother and I did that.
So be there like where the committee.
Oh, okay. Okay, all right.
I talked a little bit to Craig. Talked to, um, your guy.
Dan?
Dan, just briefly. Craig has talked to Don briefly. But the agreement is that Craig will present to Don or Don and me and you, you know, before publicly presenting her. So that we'll have a heads up.
Because I'm curious if they're gonna, if they're doing any of those.
Let's get started tonight. This is a committee of a whole meeting of the school board, the West Bend Joint School District Number One. It's 5:30 on August 26, 2019. We do recognize a quorum tonight. I'm expecting Nancy to be here any minute. And the whole board's here tonight, once Nancy shows up, so that'll be great. We've got a lot of discussion items tonight, but we also have a couple of action items, put on a consent agenda, a ratification of a contract and some resignations. We aren't gonna have, gonna try not to have any action items on these committee of a whole meetings, but these are pretty important action items. And hopefully you've had a chance to look at the contract resignations. And with that, I will move to approve our consent agenda.
Second.
Any questions on the consent agenda? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? None? Great. So we'll move into our discussion items tonight, and there's been a lot of materials already given to the board prior to the meeting. Hopefully we've had a chance to review that. We'll see the presentations from Sharon, Jen, Lenny and Andy, and if there's questions along the way. This is supposed to be a pretty informal deal. I think we're at the board table tonight because it's easier to be in front of our computers and see our presenters, but, but, pretty informal. So if you have questions as we go, just shout them out.
So Joel, just a quick comment. I'm excited about the format. I really believe it's an opportunity for us to be very proactive in how you're getting some information and we can be ahead of just reacting. We're trying to get the information upfront. But having said that, I, you know, Sharon just talked to me a few minutes ago, as well as Jennifer earlier, we sent out this much information with the idea that you'll have an opportunity to review it in advance. Sharon's presentation won't be this much, but it'll, it will be more of the Reader's Digest version of what you received, but we want you to make sure that you feel comfortable asking questions on not only what Sharon is presenting, but also what Sharon sent out, or what Jennifer is presenting, but also what Jennifer sent out. And so then we, we know that you have had an opportunity to review the material and we don't want to read for you what you've already read, but we'll just want to go over the highlights.
Sharon, before you get started, I do want to tell the board who maybe didn't know that we started work, I guess officially today for our entire teaching staff. They had their big teacher in service this morning. We, some of us were there for the beginning of it, and it looked like it was gonna be a great day, and I'm assuming with the smiles I see from Jen and Laura that it was. Tired, I'm sure. And like I said this morning, I think it probably helped that it was a rainy, cruddy weather day and so, but the teachers seemed very excited, teachers and staff, seemed very excited to be back to work today, and they'll work Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Monday off, and then students show up Tuesday. So it was a pretty cool day in the district, and thanks for letting us crash it there at the beginning, and hope you had a, had a good day. So Sharon, we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you very much. I'm here to talk about the expansion of the Great Expectations Program, which many people don't know it exists. That program is for children who have identified as children with disabilities and have some significant concerns about managing and regulating their environment. And actually, one of the programs is located down the hall, and that is for our middle school kids. Have some high school students who are in some of the conference rooms on this lower level. We also are now needing to reach out for our elementary students and looking for an expansion that is outside of this building. These kiddos need to be involved in activities, they need to be outside, they need to have role models from their peers. So along with the Great Expectations Program and some of my colleagues and my connection with the Boys and Girls Club, we are starting a new program at the elementary level. In the morning, these students will be at Green Tree Elementary in a classroom. We're gonna have a little late start, so they won't actually come in at the same time as the other students. And then following lunch, we are gonna transfer them to the Boys and Girls Club. And our premise for that is to actually be in Regner Park during the afternoons for a nature-based program. I have been working with the Boys and Girls Club for years. I was on their board for eight years, and that really helps set up even their willingness to talk and to talk about, you know, supporting kids during the day. And then we are working with Rachel from the, or from the Nature-Based Learning, and she is going to be guiding our teachers with developing lessons about nature-based learning using Regner Park. We have a teacher who is in district who applied for the position, and she has had many years of experience. Previously, she worked at the Juvenile Detention Facility, and I know Jill Corbett presented that overview to you months ago, and there are some really creative things that, her name is Lynn Wagner, has brought to the program. So she will be the teacher in charge. The program will be connected with Andrea Hodges-Grant, who runs the program in this building. So we have one student who is currently based here as an elementary student, and we have three to four other students who are currently in their elementary schools that, given an IEP meeting, may potentially place those children in this program. So that IEP meeting really explains to the parents what it looks like and who will be supporting their children. My goal is to have four to five students in the program, and we will cap it at six just because of the, the need to have more intense staff available, both here at Green Tree Elementary in the morning and then in the Outdoor Education Program in the afternoon. So that's my overview. Questions?
Sharon, from a transport perspective, moving the students from Green Tree in the morning over to the Boys and Girls Club, what does that look like? And then I'm assuming going to Regner, that's just a walk across the street?
Correct.
So long as weather is, is, is good?
Yes. We are purchasing a minivan, and this idea really came to me by our new business manager, Andy. So the purchase will be a minivan that the district will own. The teachers and the assistants will pick the kids up in the morning and bring them to elementary school and then transport them to Regner Park. So that is, you know, we will have that support on the van for them to move around the community, and then some of the older kids may take part in the Outdoor Education Program in the afternoon, so we will again have the opportunity to transport them within the district.
When they're at Regner Park, if there's three or four students, how many adults would be with that group?
A minimum of two, probably three, depending on how many kids are in the program. And really, the success of our 4K program at River Edge really was the impetus for the concept of getting these little kids outside and exploring. And, you know, even though they want to jump in a puddle, once they jump in the puddle, they'll have to talk about the water and why it reacts the way it does. So it, you know, natural behavior and extending that into learning opportunity. Yes.
Since it's raining today.
Yes.
What happens in inclement weather and when it gets colder? Or does that present any challenges for clothing?
Well, we do have access to the Boys and Girls Club itself, you know, working with Jay Fisher and Max Roy. We will have a space allocated to us. We can use the gymnasium. We could potentially use the art room and the computer lab. We will provide our own Chromebooks for the students, so they will have access to that. So if it's really icky outside, they can stay at Boys and Girls Club.
But if they want to dress for the weather and still want to outside, is that okay?
Yeah, that's our preference. I mean, we had the six days off last year, but other than that, I mean, the expectation is they're outside. And we will help provide, you know, raincoats and boots and that stuff if, if the kids need that.
Historically, has a number of students that would be involved in something like this been going up, been going down, remaining about the same? Can you look back to the past and just give me your impressions of that?
Yeah. The need right now at the elementary level is new. We currently have one student who is placed out of district, and that cost is pretty extensive. The, the total cost for that one student could reach $80,000 a year. So our goal is to have him return to the system slowly because he's been in an altered location in Brookfield. So we have, you know, four students at the elementary where previously we had moved them to Fair Park Elementary, which was really our site with some of our strong special ed teachers in the area of behavior. We now have that at all of our locations. We've done some transfers and some really good hires, so we are able to manage that behavior to significant extent at the elementary locations. But we have four students now. The IEP teams have asked us to consider an out-of-district placement. And that's really hard for anybody in my team to say that the kids aren't welcome in our system, because this is where they live, they need to understand their community and have ownership. So I think being out in the parks and understanding, you know, what is available for them as students is gonna be beneficial for their families in addition to a great learning opportunity. Any other questions?
Very cool. Nice work expanding this program and being able to meet the needs of these students.
Yeah, it's gonna be wonderful.
Very cool.
So if you ever want the opportunity, just let me know.
Cool. Thank you. All right. Jen?
So, good evening, everyone. I'm here to share with you, along with my fellow colleagues that are gonna join me, a quick summary about the District Continuous Improvement Plan. What was provided to you was more of a detailed version, but tonight we want to give you a few highlights of kind of where we've been and where we're going. So those of you who are with us this morning, this is one of the pieces that I shared, really talking about all areas of that District Continuous Improvement Plan. I shared this morning with the staff that even our new staff, as they came onboard, they talked about the importance of the word, the key words in each value statement. For example, in safe and secure, that key word of everyone, just how important that is, especially now. So what we're gonna do tonight is just give you a quick summary of just kind of where we're at with our student learning goals, and then we'll give you an overview of each of the areas, and then we can have more conversation and go in depth as needed.
So in the red area of focus, our, our goals from last year are, in regards to English and Language Arts, we're in the progress, in process. We've met parts of them and other parts we're working towards, but we've not yet, cannot yet say that we've fully accomplished that. So they're in yellow yet because we are continuing to work on them. Again, the same thing with our second goal in English Language Arts, looking specifically at each grade level and getting to the certain level of proficiency in those goals. Again, we're making progress, we're not yet there, so those goals are remaining in yellow. Then we go into the area of mathematics. We have met some of the goals again in mathematics, but we continue to be a work in progress, and while we're making gains towards those, we're not yet there.
I do want to point out with this information, you'll notice that Laura's not telling you the exact numbers, it's because the information is embargoed. So our goals are written in a way that we can give you that yellow, green, red kind of feedback of kind of where we're at, but we won't be able to share specific numbers until the embargo's lifted, and that would be about November at best.
When is the Wisconsin Forward Exam given?
On spring, March.
And so that information is what is currently embargoed?
Yes. So Laura's gonna talk about the summary for the student learning, and then we'll go section by section.
So the red focus area at the top of the triangle is our area where we're focusing on student learning. And we were very specific in the wording of this goal because it reaches out to every classroom, every student within the system. Excellence for all is our vision for the district, and this goal will help us get there. We want to make sure that our students are ready, and we're, to do that, we have to focus on our tier-one instruction, the instruction that they receive every day in every classroom that they're attending. To do that, we're gonna have an emphasis on literacy. We've talked with you in the past about our move to a comprehensive literacy model and building that common vocabulary, common expectations, and common strategies for use, that our teachers will use across the system. We're going, we're moving forward with year one of that plan. We're also looking at high-impact instructional strategies across every classroom. Our teachers will specifically have some opportunities to collaborate and work on those high-impact strategies, and reflect on and examine specifically their classroom practice with regards to some of those. All of these practices are designed to meet the standards. Some of our subject areas, if you recall, in April you approved new social studies standards. It's time for us to really, we need the time this year with our staff to dig in and look at where we are with regard to meeting those. The other component we need to do is make sure that we're providing experiences that allow students to attain those grade-level standards, not that we have a lower level of rigor, but that our coursework, our activities that students are doing, and how they're demonstrating their knowledge is meeting, is giving them opportunities to work with and meet or exceed those grade-level standards.
So the next area is under engagement of staff and customer satisfaction. In our model, that is the, in the pyramid, the element that's underneath student learning. And to me, that makes a lot of sense, because if we have a highly engaged staff, that's gonna support all the success that we're gonna have in the, the learning area. There's a lot of ways you can try to achieve engagement, but our focus really, we've decided, is on engagement achieved through kind of a grassroots approach. So our goal is to collect lots of feedback from staff and then use that feedback to develop action plans, so that the, the ideas and the impetus for what we're going to implement is coming from the staff and working its way up. What's, what's, you know, challenging work for us is when we collect staff survey information, we're collecting from everyone, right? So we're collecting from nutrition staff, custodial staff, clerical staff, aides, teachers, administrators, and each of them bring their own perspective, which is good that we get that variety. The, the challenge for us, that, that is really our hard work and that we're committed to doing, is we have to find the common themes that run through those and how we can create solutions that align to multiple employee group mindsets that really, if I come up with a solution, that it's not only gonna be something that the teachers really like, but also that the special ed aide staff likes, and that, and I shouldn't just say like, but feels will be effective and move us forward. So that's the hard work that, that we do, you know, human resources and the rest of the department is finding those kind of integrated solutions. But our core strategy is around survey, both informal and formal, and collecting information so that it's coming from the staff. For parent-wise.
Sorry. Sorry, I was slow to find the button. Can you tell me more about specifically the informal versus formal? And what those look like?
So formal, you can certainly imagine, right? So we have our staff engagement surveys that last year we were able to roll out again, and we were really excited to have a really quality tool for that, that we're gonna be able to use in a more consistent way to really get good comparable information. As well as a, a number of our administrators do some, you know, surveys within their building where are kind of more check-ins, like, okay, on last year's engagement survey, you said you really wanted me to do a better job getting communication out to you quickly, right? So some of our principals might do some mini-surveys at a couple points in the year to say, hey, how's that going now? Are we seeing those long-term impacts? Because, you know, one of the things really you have to balance is not over-surveying people, right? Because then your, your, all your results become invalid. So we gotta, with the use of our staff-wide engagement survey, really have to be careful how we time that and space that and do it consistently at the same time. Informally, you know, there's a lot of different tools that our administrators are using. There's one that I use that all of elementary used, and as well as some of the secondary principals used last year, it's called Culture Rounding. I think we talked a little bit about it in our spring elementary presentation to you, but it's more one-on-one meetings, informal narrative. We ask some questions about what's working well, what are some opportunities for improvement? How's there, is there a system we can make move smoother? What's something you want to learn about? Who in our, who in our team, you know, really deserves a pat on the back? So those kind of feedback pieces really help us find those themes as well. And when you pair that kind of feedback with the more formal survey feedback, you really start to understand, oh, when they answered that survey question this way, they're pointing to this, which I think, you know, often organizations make the mistake that they get this big survey data, right, and you get tons and tons of data, and then the leadership just tries to guess what they were really getting at, where it's just go ask them, you know, and, and you'll get at what the point is behind that. Why were they so, you know, concerned about, you know, communications is kind of the classic example, because every organization's always trying to get better at communication, but what is it that they want to see in communication? Because if I just try to guess, I might put a ton of time and effort into a communication tool that they're like, wow, that does nothing for me. Great, you know, great job wasting your time. So we need to pair that informal with formal. Good question. And then I, I think I'd start to talk about parent surveys. So we, you know, we survey students at certain years, we get feedback from them, which is a customer satisfaction piece, but we really want to develop the same type of high-quality and consistently-used parent survey as we did for the employees. So kind of stage one of this was our employee engagement survey. We've been getting great information out of that. We've always given parent surveys, but there's been kind of a variety of types that we've used, and, you know, for us to really know if we're growing, we need to be giving a consistent, high-quality tool, and we have some real good resources for us to take that next step.
I'm on the bottom tier, and because it's one of the foundations for where we, we build from, is a focus on safety and security. And there are really three avenues that we look at. Physical security, the social and emotional piece, which Sharon looks after, and the cybersecurity piece that Tim looks after. This past year, I spent a lot of time developing our school emergency response plans. It's a very large document, but it's been, also been pared down for every individual teacher in the district, so that it's a quick reference to go to for, for everyone. The large emergency response plan is really a, a document for planning, for making sure that all your resources are allocated properly, and for understanding what resources you actually have within the facility. And then also a way to, if something does happen, to recover after that. So that's what we've been spending a lot of time on, as well as getting pieces in place that we, that were awarded to us through the Department of Justice grant. So there's been a lot of effort on getting that forward, and there'll be a little bit more coming forward in the next year, so.
And along with the grants, this past week, we completed the threat assessment training, which is a process where we look at specific students who maybe have a concern. Oftentimes, if school violence occurs and a student was involved in that, people ask, you know, what did you know, or why didn't you know? So the process that we were trained in really is for employees of the district, if there is a significant concern about any one child, we now have a process to analyze that child with the family and potential agencies to talk about, is it something that we need to address as a system, and then how do we go about doing that? We also have completed our training as trauma-sensitive schools. Every school in the district is identified as completing that process, which we should be very proud of. It's a lot of time and effort looking at the socially-emotional growth of our kids, both on the very positive side of that, where we are helping to develop student leaders in the area of that social and emotional part about being at school, because they are probably the best resource we have to work with their classmates and their peers to continue to really enjoy going to school and being part of that community.
All right, good evening, everyone. So for the portion of cybersecurity, it really gets broken down into cybersecurity and data privacy. And so for the past year, we've really worked heavily on both aspects of that. One of our highlights being that we actually have a standard contract that we deploy now to anybody new that we bring in, any online system that we're gonna hand over any sort of data to for our students that talks about how we're gonna interact, what happens when we leave that company, what happens in the event of a data breach, all of those types of things. Continuing into this year's plan, if you really look at it, it's a two-pronged approach. Part of it is, is what can the technology department do to stop the problem? As much as we think we're invincible and we can stop everything, we can't. So the other part of this really is the, the end-user side, continuing to educate our end-users on what does it look like when you're being phished? What is a scam? What are good passwords? What are things that I can do on a regular basis? What is it that I shouldn't put up on a screen? Whatever the, the piece is of really getting into that. So we'll use Cybersecurity Month in October to kick off some additional required trainings for staff, along with some educational pieces this year.
The last area is effective and efficient. This area really is really focused on our District Continuous Improvement Plan, as far as that's our guiding philosophy. One of the things we're working on this year, and we even started this morning, was training everybody in using a data tool called EduClimer. This, in the past, we had a tool that was really only servicing a certain population of students and the staff that were working with them. And so based on the feedback and the need of the staff, what we're working on is for them to continuously improve and help give the students what they need. We're giving them access to the student information really quickly to what they need so that they can make decisions to impact students. Along with that, we partnered with Tim on the data privacy and talked about that in each section of the training, and so that's been a key focus, and will continue to be a key focus throughout the year. The other area is the financial piece.
New standard from the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. It was effective July 1st of 2019. Last school year was a beta year where the state of Wisconsin asked school districts to start migrating their data out to the buildings, more of a site-based model. We had a hybrid of that for several years, for quite a few years, but it didn't meet the new standards. And so where we did have steps that moved towards that last year, we're taking additional steps in organizing data, all of our coding, if you hear about our WUFAR, which is the Wisconsin Uniform Financial Accounting Requirements, and basically taking all of those expenditures and revenues and having them become a usable piece of information to help us make some decisions. Finds some linear consistency in the data, timely, accurate, organized, and that's the goal. So did continue that, it was a goal last year, it's continuing to this year, even a little bit further, then with some reflection, what was the fancy term they used? Soliciting a little bit of feedback from some of the budget users and why not. So we wanted to make sure that that continued and it met the current standards that will actually be used by all districts in the state this year.
With that area closed, we just want to let you know that in each area, we have goals and strategic actions, and this will be the same with all of our school improvement plans. It's really important that we have those clear targets as well as action steps along the way.
Lots of questions.
Just a couple of quick comments. One is that last year, we talked about it, and we are planning on, Jennifer talked about staff and parent surveys, but we, or Lenny maybe was the one that talked about it. We're also gonna do student surveys as well, and we'll do them as they leave fourth grade and enter into fifth grade, as they leave sixth grade and enter into seventh grade, as they leave eighth grade and enter into ninth grade, and then our seniors. And so we're just trying to figure out what's the best timing for those surveys, but, but they're the end product. And so we really want to find out from our students what they're feeling as well. And so that's in place. And then Tim talked about cybersecurity, but he also this morning talked about security in our buildings. And just for your information, I think Tim mentioned this morning, forty new security cameras been purchased and will be installed throughout the district this year, as well as Raptor Technology is the system that we're working on and hopefully will be fully operational throughout the school year. So everybody coming into the buildings will have to scan their, their driver's license and get a card that shows where they're going, their picture will be on it. And so just two other types of technology. We really emphasized this morning that school safety is this year, every year's ultimate, utmost important part of our job. We want to make sure that it happens, but it's also something that all of us need to take part in. And so, I can't just say, principals, you need to do a better job. We all need to do a better job. We need to be out in the halls, we need to be just accessible to make sure that every one of our buildings is as safe as it possibly can within the building, as well as from outside intruders. Take it away.
I really open up if there's any questions or further conversation. I may know some of the answers, but obviously I'm a team.
Well, Peggy, backing on the security question, I think, was it decorum that you were redoing the entrance for? Was that this summer? I'm just...
It was going to be this summer, and we ran into a snag with getting doors. So, and we had a whole bunch of other projects going on. So, rather than get halfway through it and have school start, we've actually opted to try to do it a little bit later in the year. We have to find a window to get it done, but it still is in the works and is in planning.
A similar question, Dave. Other projects throughout the district, and hopefully I stay on topic here, but are things, you know, I drive by Silverbrook every day, it looks like they're still working on the roof over there, and the roof of the high school.
I had four days.
You had four days. But as it relates to the topic, I suppose, you know, I'd want to tie it into security. We, you know, we wouldn't want school to be starting with 50 construction roofers on the, you know, in and out of the building.
No, that will not happen. You know, if, if we do keep running into weather issues and they do get pushed back a little bit more, they have to have all their stuff offsite. That's, that's the ultimate deal. Now, they can come back and work on weekends, after-hours, do whatever they need to do to get finished. We do have some liquidated damages in the contract for not getting done. So, you know, it's, it's all being managed. Probably the biggest one that we've got going right now is the, our weight room project. That was one that we actually took the construction on in-house, which kind of put a lot of other things on the back burner that we had planned over the summer. But it was something that we couldn't have afforded to do by contracting it out. So, it was really important that it get taken care of. So, we took it on, and we'll pick up the pieces a little bit later.
Great.
I need one more. Since we got you up here.
Well, okay.
Just going into the high school library, I think, right, they consolidate into one library?
It's, it's in the process of being done. I was actually talking to Tim today about that. And about half the books are moved out of there now, and the collection has been weeded out. We'll be meeting as a group in the middle of September to really go over what the staff and administration wants to see in a single library. And then, we've looked at a couple of things of what we can do with the existing space. For example, that tiered seating that's in that study hall, that's going to be staying. And that is all structural. So, when you open up the ceiling underneath cafeteria, that, it's all steel underneath there that's been put, put there. So, we'll have to come up with some creative solutions to items like that. But what we ultimately want to do is have a really good library at the end of the day that meets the needs of all students and staff. And the other thing that we're trying to do is, we've put enough money in the capital budget this year to get started, but there's certainly not enough to get finished. So, as we have more discussions about one library or two down the road, we'll try to straddle those budget years, so that we can be finishing off on something and then getting a new infusion of cash going forward, so that we can move forward with the project. The ultimate goal is to have it ready for school next year.
Just a quick comment. We will either in November or December, bring to the board a detailed plan of what we think it should look like for your consideration, your review, and your final approval, or to say, no, we want to go a different route. But that's our plan, as we met earlier. And so, we want a final recommendation to you with how the new library will look, what we'll do with the old library, if we choose to have one library rather than two. But we need to have that in, I can't remember if we said November or December, but it will be before the beginning of the year.
Any more questions? Very good.
Well, our next step really will be to continue our work with this, but then we'll update you as the year goes on, as we, you know, monitor our action steps and see how we're doing with each and every project.
Jennifer, we would be remiss if you didn't talk about the, is it the bi-weekly or the highlighter? I can't remember for sure. So, if you would share those.
Okay, I will tell them. Okay, so, a couple of us made...
Ronald Reagan.
So, one of the pieces in the engagement survey was that people weren't feeling as informed, like honestly, only 64% felt informed. So, a couple of us have been working really hard this summer on, what are we going to do about this, right? We want, we talk about giving a survey and doing something about it. And so, we have created this communication that we're going to use, and it's going to come out bi-weekly, and we named it something, and this morning I messed up the name. It's called the highlighter, but I accidentally got confused with it's coming out bi-weekly and called it the bi-weekly. So, the highlighter communication will come out to staff every two weeks. Don's got a little chant for, a little saying, the highlighter. We'll pass it on. Aw, come on.
I don't know, I think we need to hear it now.
At some point, he will tell you. So, the, the highlighter will be the communication that goes to staff to really make sure that they have the information, they need to feel informed. So, that's one of our big action steps. He was just trying to let me know that I messed up this morning, so.
And that is, that's, as it relates to the continuous improvement plan.
Yep.
Because I know HR department comes out with a newsletter and things, and...
Actually, we're going to consolidate all of that.
You are.
And so, it's not just department, department, department. We're also going to kind of mainstream our internet pages to make sure they look similar for like, main three pieces. But our, the highlighter communication is really going to be from everyone at district, every department. It's not going to be very long. Obviously, Don or Laura would have a section each time, but if I have assessment updates or Sharon's got some new things, we would have that in. And then, the cool thing is that we've been working so that the information is sent out, but it's linked back and housed in a blog, and that blog is searchable for anyone. And so, when you talk about asking people what they want, Lenny will tell you, they want it searchable, okay? And so, they're going to be able to search not only by department, because they may say, you know what, Tim did mention this, but I don't remember when. So, they could look up technology, but then they could say, you know what, it was about EduClimer. And they could search EduClimer and see everything on EduClimer. So, our goal is really to inform the staff. It's called the highlighter. The first one's coming out September 5th. I won't forget the name, I'm sorry.
And so, this morning, when we had our in-service, I talked about politics, and I said, this is an exciting year. Wisconsin's going to be in the news. We might have an opportunity to help choose the next president, whether it's Ronald Reagan or, I meant to say Donald Trump, but Ronald Reagan came out. Kind of dates me as to how old I really am. Many of the guys didn't even know who Ronald Reagan was, but, so.
I would also invite you, if you all want to see any pieces of EduClimer at our school days, you know, when people are sitting down in their professional learning communities, I really encourage you to see kind of all the learning that we're doing this year. So, you're welcome anytime.
Great. Thank you.
All right, members of the board, Superintendent Kerkergard, I want to thank you for inviting me to talk about insurance benefits tonight. I'm joined by Katie Gordine. She's one of the awesome members of our team in human resources, coming to the human resources department from the principal level. It's really been outstanding to work with the team that we have there. We have four really excellent individuals that know this stuff inside and out. So, we really have a great time pairing all the information, all the data, all the background that they have with all of the kind of desires of our staff and what they want a benefits plan to look like. So, glad to bring Katie along, because there's probably many questions you have that I don't know the answer to, and she can rattle them off right off the top of her head. So, what I'm going to try and do tonight is give you a brief outline of kind of the, the core components of our insurance benefit offerings, what, what kind of major updates we're looking at for the new year, as well as kind of just strategic approach that the district takes right now in kind of negotiation and selection of insurance benefits. This was sent out to you, so you certainly can follow along on your presentation as So, again, where does this fall in, in our strategic plan? Everything always comes back to this pyramid. And I, I think, again, this does a great job of, of laying out where we need to build our foundation, like Dave Ross talked about, and then how we get our staff to be as effective as, as possible, which is our, you know, responsibility under the engagement area, and that will lead to student learning. For me, this largely falls under a couple of areas, insurance benefits. It certainly falls under effective and efficient. Are we being good stewards of the taxpayer resources? And are we using them to leverage our resources the best way possible? But then, more so, it comes under that engagement section, because benefits are possibly our greatest recruitment and retention tool that we use for staff. And when I say that, you know, in our field, often we think of teachers, because they do make up half of our staff, right? But another half of our staff is support staff, and these benefits often apply to a number of those people as well, and sometimes don't. So, how do we then also create a great retention and recruitment program for support staff? Maybe that don't have, and some support staff have full access to our, all of our benefits, but some do not. So, it's really a comprehensive effort in really balancing those pieces. Some of the information I'm going to share tonight, you may have heard in pockets before. So, you know, a little bit might be redundant, but feel free to ask questions, stop me at any time, okay? So, again, we talk about what's, what's the point of a benefit package? The point of a benefit package, A, to make sure we have a well staff, and B, to keep and recruit a great staff. So, you know, in terms of teacher retention, we're in a, we're in a good spot for a few years running, in fact, in terms of beating the Metropolitan Milwaukee average in terms of teacher retention. I have kind of the, the core data right there on the screen. This 6.3% turnover rate is last year's. We don't count turnover until the actual first day of school, and make sure that everyone actually is there on the first day of school, and then they count as being our employee for a new year. But based on our current new teacher data, I actually expect us to likely beat that 6.3% number.
How does that compare? So, I see you have the Milwaukee Metro, but how does that compare to our neighbors? You know, we get that comment all the time, so.
We generally, I don't want to call it beat, but we generally beat all of our neighbors. So, and I do have the data by district. I probably, this probably isn't the venue for me to share that, but if you're interested, I'd be happy to communicate that electronically or whatnot with you. But we do very well. We do very well. I think we, there's, there's kind of a synergy of things here. There's great opportunity for teachers, you know, there's a variety of different roles because of our size. So, often, you know, maybe someone is in a position that they, they have a variety of other types of classes that are similar content area, things like that. There's more opportunity to transfer within our system than a lot of our smaller neighbors. On top of that, I think that, that there's a lot of great benefits to just working in West Bend as far as a community, as well as a district, that our neighbors sometimes struggle to, to compete with. And finally, I think our benefit and compensation packages are, well, I don't think, I know, they are highly competitive, and especially compared to a number of our neighbors.
Right.
The other piece we look at, so turnover is a great measure of retention, but how do we measure our recruitment success? That one's a little bit trickier, right? Because you're going to fill all the positions, but how do you know that you really did a great job recruiting the absolute best candidate? One of the measures we use is looking at our acceptance rate on job, on job offers. So, if I come to Paul and offer him a job, and he says no, well, then I got to ask myself, why did Paul say no? He went through all this effort to interview, and we have a rigorous interview process, especially for teachers and administrators, why is he saying no? So, you definitely want a high rate there, that, that they, you know, are interested based on what they learn about the district, and then when they hear about our benefit offerings, they're even more interested. So, 80% is a good number. We haven't benchmarked this over multiple years going back. This is kind of a newer data point for us to, to look at. I mean, we've always, we've had the data, but maybe not analyzed it as part of the strategic plan in the same way. So, I'm excited, moving forward, to continue to watch that number. And that's one that there isn't as much easily accessible comparable data from our neighbors and from the Metropolitan Milwaukee area. So, trying to gather that comparable data will be kind of one of my goals over the next year or two. So, some key pieces about how our district insurance benefits are funded. We are a self-funded district. This factors heavily into what Andrew Sarno does in terms of managing those resources. What this means is that we're big enough that when a claim for insurance payment comes to us, we actually pay it out of our funds. It doesn't just go to an insurance company that's paying it out of their balance. This has a number of advantages. It gives us a much greater flexibility in how we structure plans, so that we can really kind of tailor them, both on our end and, and on the employee end, to what is going to work best for what we need. It also does provide some small administrative fee savings that you're not using the insurance company's resources in, in kind of an intermediary way. We obviously still use an insurance company, because they are the ones that negotiate with each provider, you know, the payment amounts and things like that. Now, you might say to yourself, well, that's great to be self-funded, but what about when you have someone that has that really catastrophic situation that costs millions of dollars in medical, medical care? So, in those cases, we have what's called stop-loss insurance, which, when we have those really large claims, it's kind of a backup insurance policy. So, when individual claims go over 250,000, combined with an aggregate of, as a, as a system, it has to be over a certain number, then a stop-loss insurance starts picking up the tab on those claims. So, that's kind of our protection against those really high-cost claims. We work through an insurance broker, Willis Towers Watson is our insurance broker, been working with them a number of years. And they work as intermediary in negotiating and with a number of different providers. They also, they have purchasing power in that, you know, they're working with a insurance carrier, and it's not just one district trying to get a great rate out of them. They're saying, hey, we bring you, you know, many, many, many millions in business, you need to give all of our clients a great deal. We do find that we get some very competitive offers from our insurance carriers due to their leveraging. The other thing that Willis Towers Watson does is they give us a lot of great comparable information, especially as you're designing a wellness program that you want to, you know, not just, you know, help your employees be well, but also be, you know, fiscally effective in reducing your liabilities in insurance. They give us a lot of information about what else is going on in the industry and help us make some wise decisions there. One of the other key components of our medical health insurance here is health reimbursement accounts or HRAs. So, we do fund HRA, HRA accounts out of the district funds. The staff complete different activities to earn those HRAs. And that can be across the country, structured in a lot of different ways. Ours is pretty straightforward. Once a year, in fact, this past week, we have a HRA event where we, our staff go in at Badger Middle School over the course of four days, as well as their spouses, they have kind of a blood draw done, and then they, they get information in a couple of weeks later about some of their health background information, you know, what your risk levels are, you know, cholesterol, all those sorts of measurables. And then, those employees and spouses will have a certain number of consultation visits with our wellness clinic, where we can provide some guidance from the, from the provider side and help our staff meet their wellness goals. If our staff meet the criteria just to go to the consultations, you don't have to, you know, you don't have to lose weight or lower your cholesterol or anything like that. If you attend your consultations, you earn your HRA dollars. There's also some smaller incentives, such as like smoking cessation and things like that, that you can earn some additional money through. So, I'm going to share with you, a diagram kind of outlines how we structure all of our insurance benefits. All funders falls under this umbrella that the district aims to offer, efficient, attractive, and competitive employee benefit programs that provide our staff and their families with choice in affordable and sustainable coverage. And I think when you look at, at what I'm going to show you, choice is definitely a key element of what we do. So, under that umbrella, there's kind of three strategic pillars that we always are keeping our eye on. Whatever, whatever we are doing in the area of benefits, whether it's something we provide or a program that we're pursuing, or how we design something, we want them to be efficient in management, focused on the employee or customer experience, and then always obviously considering that affordability and value component. The, on the bottom here, these five boxes are what I'm going to now talk about for the remainder of the presentation, and they're really the five elements that together provide us with this great experience that we talked about. So, the first one is program design, and I'll go through a couple of... And I'll go through a couple, or a few of our major pieces. And this is probably the one that, to you, sticks out. This pillar is kind of the one that sticks out the most, right? How are you structuring your insurance plans? So with dental insurance, what I'm going to do is, in each area, kind of give a real brief snapshot of where we're at, and then let that lead into a couple, maybe updates that are taking place this year to continue to work towards those goals that we have. So just to give, this table kind of gives you an idea of how much we spend in dental coverage each year. This includes our employee premium component as well. But you can see we're, you know, under a million dollars in dental claims every year, and we have, you know, a little over 600 different enrollees, or members, so families, in our dental plan. You can see here the average claim, any claim that comes in is averaging, you know, close to $200 per claim.
I have a question.
Yep.
So if the average paid claim is nearly $200, and there's over six per employee, that's over $1,200 a year per employee. Does that include their families? It seems high to me.
Yep, it includes the family as well.
Okay.
So, you know, you've got, if you've got a family of, you know, four, per se, that's four claims just for your, you know, one checkup per person, right? And if everyone's doing two a year, that's eight claims already.
Okay.
And if you come back for a filling, there's an additional claim.
Okay, thanks.
Why are you anticipating it to go down next year?
Well, so this also includes, the $843,000 also includes our employee premium contributions. So this is the total amount that, that $843,000, the total amount that we paid out. We also foresee that, you know, we've had, I guess from our perspective, a good year in terms of claims. So the projections that we get come from the insurance broker working with the dental carrier, which is Delta Dental. And they project out, okay, based on where you are right now, you know, this is on, it's always kind of a guessing game, because this is for the, our projection is for the new school year, but we're always kind of tracking where we've been, right? So we're always trying to make predictions. So what they do is they take both our history over the last year, as well as the kind of industry standard, see where it's trending, and then give us the projection, and we use that to set what our premiums are.
Andy, is it, excuse me, Lenny, 751, do you, if you look at last year's, it was 872, does that say there's about $70,000 worth of employee cost included with that? Do you have any idea how much money the employees pay of that, 843,600?
So I can tell you what the premiums are for a family. So we consider a dental plan as a family if they have more than one member, so, just so you understand the tiering on that. If we have a specific aid group, for example, they have to pay the full premium cost, so they pay $157 per month for a family plan. The single plan would be $42 per month, and that's for any group that falls in like the 20 to 30 hour group. So that's the majority of like aides. There'll be some clerical staff that would fall in that as well. On the district side, where we sponsor it for teaching staff or anybody that's over 30 hours, they pay $20 per month, and that's for a family plan, and $5 for single.
You're still talking about dental? $145 per month for the family premiums?
$157.
$157?
That's for the employees that are between 20 and 30 hours. So that's not the full benefit. So we still offer the benefit to employees that are below 30 hours, but about 20, but it's at a higher cost.
Do we have many that take it if they're outside of the full benefit?
I can't give the exact numbers. I don't know the exact numbers, but yes, we do have a population of our aides that will take our dental plan and pay that full cost. So they just, they pay a higher premium, but they get the same benefit that all the other employees do.
Higher than $157 a month?
No, no, that's the high.
That's what they're paying, correct.
Okay, what's the full-time employee premium?
It's $20 per month.
Okay, that makes more sense for them.
And the $5 per month for single.
Okay, got it.
$20 for a family, one or more people on the plan, over 40 hours a week.
So it's kind of an additional benefit that we offer to our part-time staff. You know, many organizations just wouldn't offer below 30 hours. So we, while it's costly, at least it's an option for people.
Oh, that's not costing us anything? For them to pay the full premium on these, with these numbers? They're paying more than what they're getting in benefits, which is, if that's their choice. They have the, I'm not worried about that.
So, I mean, we absorb obviously costs in terms of administration of the plan and things like that as well.
That's solid. Thanks.
So really, the primary change that isn't really huge for us, but that we are going to make to try and maximize that, again, under that effective and efficient mindset, is there's a few different levels of types of providers in dental coverage in our plan. There's really three, but only two that are really of note. So there's our PPO, which, as it says here, is really our, that's where we love for people to go. We get our biggest discounts on our PPO providers in dental care. And then there's Premier, kind of the middle one, where we get a discount, but it's not as high. You can see it's a 13.7% discount on the Premier versus, you know, almost 25% on PPO. There's a third category, which is non-contracted, basically like you're out of network kind of situation, that we, it's all of, I think, 1.8% of our employees use a non-contracted carrier. So there's obviously a benefit to the more employees and their families that we can have use a PPO provider. At the bottom, I put a summary that if you look at our last, you know, 12 months of claims, if everyone had gone to a PPO provider, well, it's not, you know, it's not going to balance the budget for us, $36,000 is, you know, it's a couple of aides' worth of salary for a year. So, you know, if, the more that we can encourage that type of choice on behalf of the consumer, the better it is for our system. That, so, that being said, we're not making, we're not like taking away that opportunity to use those Premier providers with dental, but we're creating what I would consider is a small incentive to maybe at least reflect and say, hmm, is it worth it for us to maybe look around at the PPO providers? There are many, many dozens of PPO dental providers just in the city of West, or the area of West Bend, so there's no shortage of options. Currently, it's around 70% of our claims are to PPO providers, about 28% to our Premier, and then the last 2% or so to the non-contracted. So we're adding these deductible and annual maximum changes to try and create a little bit more incentive to drive people towards PPO providers, and hopefully continue to help us still get great care for our employees, but also maximize our resources.
I think when we looked at it, we encouraged, Delta Dental went out to all the West Bend area dentists, and some of them agreed to go to a PPO, others did not. But I want to say 75, 80% of all the dentists in the West Bend area are PPO providers. And so I just found my new dentist, and I looked specifically for a PPO provider, and she does an excellent job. And so there are a lot of quality PPO dentists in our area.
And the last element of those five components, part of that is communication. So what we did when we shared this information last week with staff is we gave them the link right to the website, where you go and you can type, you can search for providers, you can look your provider up right away. You know, we want to empower the staff to make easy decisions, and we don't want to make them jump through hoops to get the information they need.
I think that's better than it was 15 years ago, when it seemed like there was only one dental provider in town for the district. And so I like that there's choice now for, there's many providers in the PPO, you're saying. That's a big improvement.
And that goes, you know, I did this, I did a search myself, and that includes not just, you know, your typical dentist, but you're talking orthodontic and also those specialists as well. There's a lot of options in the West Bend area. So the next area I'm going to talk about is our most costly insurance benefit, but probably, you know, one of our biggest recruitment and retention tools, and that's that medical side, the health insurance side, leaving out pharmacy. Pharmacy, we're going to talk about after this. So I have a couple of graphs here, and we could probably go on and on about the table, the two tables that we have, but I wanted to at least give you some of the data, you know, some of that hard numbers between this table and then the following one, to give you an idea of how we break up the contribution side, both from the employee and then the employer's side. Again, choice is something I talked about earlier. Choice is a key feature in a lot, in pretty much all of our insurance offerings. So there are three different plans that an employee's family can choose within the health plan. And the difference is really, you've got your, there's a number of differences, but the big ones are size of your deductible, amount of out-of-pocket maximum, and amount of HRA funding that you're going to get, right? So you've got this balancing act, how much money the district's going to provide in HRA funding, but on the other end, that kind of counterbalances that is the size of your deductibles and out-of-pocket costs, right? So the employee really gets to make a choice. If you think I'm a family that doesn't, or an individual that doesn't use a lot of healthcare, I can choose the high deductible plan. I don't get as much in HRA money, but my premium is much lower, and I'm going to, you know, I don't want to say roll the dice, but I feel confident in that risk as an employee. Then there's kind of a mid-level plan in between there, and then there's one the way opposite way, where you're reducing your total kind of maximum potential liability and insurance cost to you, but you're paying a lot more for the premium, okay? And that's how, you know, we generally balance that. Our most popular plan, or our most common plan, is our middle one, Plan Two for Families. It's the one that we see the most, kind of that mid-range plan there. Obviously, like I said, I could talk about this table for quite a while, but is there any specific question you had about this graph here?
Lenny, when it shows 17.5, 8.3, and 2.7 employee contribution, that includes the HRA amount?
That, the employee contribution, that's talking premium.
Premium, strictly premium.
So the bottom section of that table is from our insurance broker, and it's giving kind of like a nationwide cost comparison. Wisconsin is one of the higher insurance, health insurance cost states comparably amongst the 50 states. And then on top of that, those that work in education, which that's a subset of below there, those that work in education often are frequent users of healthcare. More informed individuals, more preventative and more proactive often, is what, you know, you find in the industry. So we are in kind of a costly market, corner of the market here. So this is the only other kind of data-heavy graph I put in here, but again, it's probably information that either now or down the road, they'll say, oh, that was helpful for me. So the HRA contributions can be as much as $3,000 to the employee in a single year. So you can get $1,000 for yourself that the district contributes, $1,000 for a spouse, and then $1,000 for, if you have any children, but only 1,000 not per child. Just whether you've got one child or 10, you're getting $1,000 for those additional. So you can get up to $3,000 in HRA contributions. Tony?
So the HRA is not funded by the employee, it's funded by the district?
That's district money that we're putting towards it. And by putting it in that account...
It's like giving them a budget.
What's that?
It's like giving them a budget.
It is like giving them a budget. Again, choice and empowering the employee to make, you know, great decisions about, okay, where, you know, where do I want to go for this medical care? What, you know, what is the appropriate timing for me in my life for when I want, you know, certain maybe more optional procedures or things like that to be done? So, again, putting choice in the employee's hand. So one thing that's interesting about this graph is here, you know, this just kind of breaks out generally, this first column here, see the pointer? Good. Is looking at, so you've got the employer cost, and then this is out-of-pocket, OOP. What you see down here in the key is out-of-pocket for the employee, okay? And then this bottom part is the employee contribution, which would be the premium, okay? And each, as you go from one graph to the next, it's breaking out additional data for you, okay? So the middle column is including what the district is contributing HRA money. So that, I don't know if you want to call that fuchsia or whatnot color, is, that's district money too, you know? So you might as well mix that in with the purple in terms of what we're paying out. Now, you might say, wow, $796 is the average HRA. You just told me they can get up to 3,000. How does that add up? And here's how that works, and I got to thank Katie, because she can figure out these tables better than I can. So what we do is, that's the amount we're paying out, okay? When we have HRA funding, it's really like virtual funding, like the employee can see, oh, I've got $9,000, which is the max, sitting in my HRA account. We don't actually fund that money into a standalone account. That's just money we have committed to paying when you eventually file your claim. So even though I may claim, I may collect a large sum of money in HRA funding, it doesn't actually impact the district until you actually get medical care that then claims upon that, okay? Does that, does that make sense?
And it can be used to pay a deductible, correct?
Yes. After the first, what is it?
It's just deductible and coinsurance expenses now, is what the HRA dollars can cover. And that's automatically funded when your claims are processed through UMR. So there's really not anything that the employee necessarily has to do to receive that funding. So if they have the money in their account, they go to a provider, it goes through UMR. UMR then processes this to DBS, which is just the company that we utilize. And then that money is deposited to either an employee's bank account, or it's a physical actual check that's sent to them to cover the cost of any deductible or coinsurance expenses.
And the account max is out at 9,000. How many, how many dollars do you get in a year?
It depends on the plan. So if you're on a Plan Two or Plan Three, you get $1,000 up to three. If you're on Plan One, it's $500.
You said that. So an employee with a spouse and a child, 3,000, they could potentially max that out in three years if they don't spend a lot of money along the way.
Correct.
And if they're employed here for 10, 15 more years, it's maxed out at nine grand. If they, if they start using a little money, they'll end up earning it back.
And obviously, the point of that large rollover amount is so that when you do have that significant health event in your life, you've got up to $9,000 sitting in there to access. It is not. No. So it's really, I don't want to call it virtual dollars, but you, you know, any employee can go look in their accounts, so I have $8,000 in my account. We didn't set that aside. We're just promising that we will provide that when the claim comes. So it's not a separate fund. That's a good question.
From an accounting perspective, I'd call it an unfunded liability. It's, we have exposure out there where we would owe that, if everybody got sick. But I think the, what I've seen in my historical operating of this, is that you'll start to see patterns and trends with the amount of money that is claimed. So unless there is an influx of injuries, illnesses, that people would be drawing on that, we can budget accordingly, but there is an unfunded liability that exists.
Just one point of clarification, Andy. So is that actually, it may not be funded, but is it recognized? Is it an account? It's accrued on our financial statements?
Literally, is it almost on a weekly basis? As we receive those invoices, when people submit for reimbursement, we receive an invoice or a bill that we charge against the account, so.
Maybe you said this, but does it, the money ever expire? Is it always there until you use it, or does it?
So it rolls over up to a max of 9,000, but then it's there for, yeah, as long as they're here, it's there. But obviously, if you hit your 9,000 and you're not using medical care, you know, then you're not earning anymore.
So, Lenny, just to finish out that thought, then, from a retention perspective, if I'm employed, but I'm looking at an alternative, and I've got 9,000 in my HRA account, if I leave, it doesn't go with me?
Nope, that's district money. So it's different from like a health savings account or a flexible spending account, which is the employee's money. This is the district's money. So if you leave, you're leaving that on the table.
Okay, thank you.
And that's what I was going to mention, too, that health savings accounts, some of you maybe have a health savings account in your business, but you contribute part of that money for the health savings account. And this one is 100% district money, and they have to use it while they're in the district, or it's no longer theirs, it stays with us.
You know, the philosophy behind an HRA fund is to encourage employees to be proactive about their health, and therefore reduce overall liability, both to the employee and to the employer in terms of health costs. So our current primary strategy is these screen, blood screenings that then lead to consultation, and we'll talk a little bit more about, there are additional options out there for how you can encourage that wellness, right? Because wellness is good from both just a human capital side, as well as a financial side. So we are not making any plan design changes in terms of our health insurance for this year. We did see a increase, again, where our health insurance starts January 1st to December 31st. So kind of as each month comes in, we meet with the broker on a monthly, if not more so, basis. And what we do is kind of see where we're trending, and then they kind of give us a projection... And what we do is kinda see where we're trending, and then they kinda give us a projection number that then Andrew uses to set the budget. So, we're now hitting that point in the year where we can confidently set that number. So, it's roughly, it's roughly between five and six percent. Five point seven percent is really the on-target number. But, depending on, you know, the way premiums are allocated, they're not always exactly right on the number. So, all the employees, if I'm on Plan One, I may be seeing a five point six percent increase, whereas Plan Three, you might be seeing five point eight or whatever. But, it's always the total amount that we're seeing an increase is five point seven percent. So, that premium, that, that cost increase, we're passing on through premium as well as district absorption. So, we are increasing our budget for health insurance by five point seven percent, and the amount that we will collect in premium from all employees total will increase by five point seven percent. We are, the broker that we use, again, uses, has as many, many clients, both in our industry as well as other industries, has generally seen an eight to ten percent increase this year, which we were forecasting for until about a month and a half ago. And then, it started to kinda cool off, and our claims are looking good. So, we are coming in below what we were predicting, which is great news for balancing our budget. That's kinda the mediest part of the presentation here, but pharmacy is an important one that I wanna talk about as well. And the data in here, I just find fascinating, so I put a couple of slides in here, because we don't always under, you know, think about when you pay your ten dollar copay at Walgreens, what that's really translating to in terms of costs. But, there's kinda three big factors that determine how much you're spending on pharmaceutical costs. Your ingredients cost, the actual drug, okay? The dispensing fees, which are very small. And then, the drug companies all, you know, it's, it's an interesting industry.
It's a wreck.
They provide pretty large rebates then for the purchase of their drugs, but that then come back to us, and Mr. Sarno records as revenue for us. So, when we look at how much we budget for pharmacy costs, we don't include those rebates, 'cause we have to pay out, you know, the total amount of ingredient and dispensing costs. But then, on, in another category, we're gonna bring in revenues of those rebates, okay? So, so, big picture, they offset, but when you, if you were to just pull out our line-by-line budget, you wouldn't see that offsetting. So, the average cost of any drug that, that we pay out is a hundred seventy-two dollars. This is the really fascinating table, and so if you're getting bored so far, I think this might make you a little more interested. But, this breaks it up by type of medication, what it costs per claim. Now, claim is a refill, right? So, a refill could be one week's worth, it could be, you know, three months' worth. So, that's a little bit of a fuzzy area. But, for me, it's just fascinating, you know, you sit there, and you know, we have a three-tiered fee structure, you know, I think it's ten, twenty-five, fifty?
It's ten, thirty.
Ten, thirty, forty, in terms of your drug costs. Okay, he's a smart one here. All right. So, you might say, "Man, I had to shell out forty bucks for that one medication, boy." Yep. And the total cost of that medication was seven thousand two hundred and one dollars on those specialty ones. So, it's quite a fascinating bit of data to review. So, I think this is important information, I think, you know, in terms of communication, for some ways, for employees to know too, right? I think when employees see what this means behind the scenes, it helps inform them as to, wow, you know, it's really nice that we didn't change our plan design, you know, of our insurance benefit this year, considering, wow, that drug that I'm on, that's getting mailed to me in home delivery every month, is costing eight hundred eleven dollars per month. You know, I think that's good information for employees to have, and wanna do some work this year to communicate that. So, our pharmacy carrier is Express Scripts, one of, I think there's three big ones they talk about in the, in the industry. That's one of the big ones. But, our contract with them is ending at the end of this year. So, we are looking at all of the various options that exist out there. And from what we see, there are some very interesting options that really can make a lot of financial sense for the district, as well as user experience sense for our employees, we think. Now, that doesn't, there are some kinda non-negotiables about, as we're looking at a new, renewing a contract with our existing carrier or going in another direction. We want our employees to have the same access to medications they've had. We don't want someone, you know, if, or a equivalent, right? I mean, there's many, you know, competing medications that in the end are the same thing. But, we don't want anyone saying, "Oh, you know, if we change carriers, oh, now I can't get that important medication, or I have to go off to another market privately and find that." We want everyone to have that access. That's critical for us. And then, maintaining our employee cost structure. So, we really wanna stay with the same structure, again, have a consistent plan design. I think predictability of budget is super important for everyone, and especially for our staff. So, the more that we can have a consistent experience financially for them is important. As we are looking at our options, we are seeing some real possible opportunities to enhance what we're, what we're doing with our pharmacy carrier. There are a lot, there's a lot of competition right now amongst these carriers to show that they're the best at providing transparency of cost, so that employees can make the best decisions for themselves. So, there's some cool options there that we're continuing to investigate. Our carrier for medical insurance, UMR, has some partnerships with some organization, with some pharmaceutical carriers that really create a lot of synergy between the two that helps the employee experience as well. So, there's some opportunity there. Customer service is one, you know, no one's ever thrilled when they have to call their pharmacy customer service, 'cause it's probably not for a reason you're really happy about. But, we think there's an opportunity for improving the customer service experience with our pharmacy provider. And finally, is the, the cost piece. Our initial look, you know, I showed you on the last slide that our rebate amounts at the bottom here were a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars or so over the course of a year. We have seen some proposals where those are over four hundred thousand dollars for the same experience, as well as potentially some lower just costs on the ingredients. So, if we're talking six-figure savings, as well as better customer experiences for our employees, we need to legitimately look at those, and we'll be digging into those where we are right now. And we're gonna have to make a decision fairly soon, because with that contract expiring at the end of this year, we really need to make a decision in September about what we wanna do. But, again, I can't emphasize enough, the key is that for the employee, there's not a change in the experience. If anything, there's an improvement in experience. Questions about pharmacy? All right. Don't worry, I know, I said there's five, five areas, but the last three go fast. So, clinical programs are some of the programs that we offer, often under kinda the wellness umbrella. And what those do is help us, you know, help our employees be well. It also then hopefully, as a, as a result of that, reduces the financial liability that then they create on our insurance claims. So, these are examples of some of the programs we offer, and we're, you know, always working with Healthstat, which is the company that is our vendor for the clinic and provides our medical assistance, nurse practitioner, and our physician assistant, to say, "Okay, what are, what are people asking for?" You know, often in those consultations over HRA visits, employees will say, "Well, I'm struggling with this." Or, "I wish I, you know, I just gotta get motivated to do this." Well, then, the wellness clinic will often turn around and offer a bunch of things that tie to that. So, we have a bunch of exercise programs, we have smoking cessation programs, as well as a number of the other pieces here that are offered. The, the next piece is integrated well-being, and what that really means is how are we pulling this all together? You know, so that, from an employee perspective, we're making it easy to access these options, and therefore, making it really, more likely they're gonna take advantage of them. So, the Wellness Center, right through the door here, the clinic, is one of the biggest ways that we integrate that all together, okay? So, they are providing consultations for people to meet their health goals. They are, the same organization is then analyzing the blood screenings and sending out confidential letters to those employees about, "Hey, here's where you're at. Here's some things you might wanna consider." And then, they're putting together all of those other programs as well.
The medication dispensary, I'm assuming that's like antibiotics or whatever. How does that impact the pharmacy program?
That's a good question. And that's one that we're really digging into over the next few months here. So, the dispensary is medications that Healthstat, which is obviously a large company, they are buying them from their pharmaceutical carrier, okay? So, that's not impacting our pharmacy costs. That being said, we pay the bill, right? So, what we do is, we get the opportunity as, to select medications that we think are beneficial, that someone can get directly from the clinic, okay? So, when we think about, you know, there's many benefits to the clinic, but one of the biggest is, all right, I've got a teacher who comes in in the morning, they're not feeling well, but they're there, and I, you know, how much we appreciate that, right? In the time of, you know, very low unemployment, there's not a lot of substitute teachers out there, right? The, one of the huge advantages of the clinic is we can say, "Hey, either, you know, you know, sometimes people will say on their lunch break, or, hey, if you can find someone to cover me for forty-five minutes, I'll run over to the clinic, have them check it out." And what often happens is, we arrange that, they come over, get diagnosed, have the prescription not just written, but many prescriptions actually filled at the clinic. Get the prescription, they can go right back to work. And now, we're not spending as much money on substitutes and things like that. And we're putting the best teacher in front of the kids instead of a substitute for however many hours it takes that person to go see their own medical provider. You know, the clinic really prides themselves on the speed of the care that they provide. You, maybe you're, maybe going to the doctor for you isn't like the experience it is for me, but when I go, I sit in the waiting room for a good thirty to forty minutes before I even get anywhere, right? So, think of all that missed time versus you go to the clinic, you get that appointment, you're in. You're in, they see you, you're out. So, there's certain medications that we feel it's beneficial for us to actually pay for the clinic to dispense. And that's no, of no charge. So, they don't even pay the copay that they would pay going to Walgreens or whatnot. 'Cause again, if they write a prescription here, and you have to go to Walgreens, now you gotta wait for Walgreens to fill it, it's more lost time for us. So, it's a real balance for us, we're really analyzing each medication that's offered there to see, are these the ones that make the most sense for us financially, as well as for making sure we're putting that, you know, the, the actual teacher in front of kids the most minutes possible?
Oh, I think it's fantastic, eliminate the middle person, streamline opportunity. I'm just curious, is the, what percentage or, you know, I'm sure there's some information of what?
So, not too far down the road, we'll be back in front of the same group and talk a little bit about the clinic. Great opportunity, we really wanna keep, continue to keep it. But, I think when it was originally proposed, it was gonna be a cost savings as well as in a benefit for convenience, okay? And so, we really, we wanna continue the clinic, but, but we wanna look to see, and that's what the questions we're asking right now. How much of a cost savings is it as opposed to a convenience? Is the convenience worth the extra added cost or not? And those are decisions that we certainly would not make without the board being very involved with that. But, that will be a discussion as we dive deep into the cost of the, the drugs at the clinic as opposed to if they just bought it at Walgreen, or, or the cost of us having us run the clinic as opposed to whatever. And so, that'll be a discussion not too far down the road.
And Tony, your question's really excellent, because we've been digging into that. In fact, looking at number reports, just got additional data, I think on Friday, looking at drug-by-drug comparisons between our pharmaceutical carrier and the clinic. Our clinic is well-used. These, each of these lines is a year. So, you know, like two thousand seventeen might be the blue line or whatnot, I don't have the key attached here. But, showing you, the clinic is highly used, and you can see those peak times before school, lunchtime and after school, when people are getting in there to get care that they need.
Is this for the whole year?
Yep. So, so each line is a year, so, yep. So, we've got five years of data there. So, we have some exciting updates to our Wellness Center program for that integrated experience for our employees. We, we are reducing the number of HRA visits required for each employee group. When you get that blood screening, you get a letter saying, "Okay, you're, you're either a, you're ranked, you're rated somewhere in a zero to four in terms of your risk score." And the four is kinda the highest risk, you might have some medical conditions, or, you know, high cholesterol, things like that, 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 you know, say, "Hey, you know, it's really important to set some good health goals and meet with someone about," all the way down to zero, where you have low risk. In the past, everyone made at least one visit to the clinic. So, if you were a zero, one, you made one visit in a year. If you were a two, you made two visits, three, you made three, four, make four, okay? What we're gonna do is reduce that, so that really it's either one group or the other. You're either not gonna make a visit, or you're gonna make two visits depending on that risk score. There were a number of reasons we went in that direction, but one of the advantages of kinda reducing those HRA requirements is now we're opening up some hours in the clinic or slots for appointments that won't be taken by HRA consultations anymore. And what that's gonna allow us to do is expand our access to more employees. So, under the current arrangement, the only people that can use the clinic are individuals who are on our health plan, okay? So, not only does that mean you need to be a full-time, you know, three, thirty-plus-hour employee, you also need to select our health plan. If, and that means that, you know, spouses, if they're on the health plan, can go. Kids, if they're on the health plan, can go, okay? That leaves out a large segment of our employee base, right? And if, especially if this is, as Mr. Kirk talked about, you know, truly just a benefit of being in the district, you know, we wanna make this as accessible as we can. So, what we're gonna do is expand access to the clinic to any employee that's working twenty hours per week or more. So, that obviously hits the vast majority of aides and those part-time support staff members, some of whom might, you know, have the greatest challenge with accessing healthcare outside of, outside of the area. And then, as well as employees, who maybe it's that same employee who came in sick in the morning, but is like, "I gotta be here for my kids," but they can't go to the clinic, because they might be on a spouse's health plan. Now, we can put them in the same situation to take advantage of that, get them the help they need as quickly as possible, get them back in front of kids, doing what they do best. And then, patients have always been able to access their clinic records electronically, but we're, we're helping communicate that a little bit more openly and helping people get access to their clinic records, just like you can get access to your medical records with your, your primary doctor. So, as we look forward, you know, another year down the road, I mean, the goal of wellness, again, is twofold. There's the human capital side, we want people to be well, we want them to be at their best for when they're in front of students. Then, there's the financial side of what we wanna get out of this. So, we really are analyzing over the next coming months, what is the effectiveness of this HRA consultation visit in terms of accomplishing that? Does it make people healthier to go have these consultation visits? 'Cause if it doesn't, we need to rethink our approach there, right? We, but you can fund HRA accounts in a variety of different ways. And you'll look around the country and see a lot of ways, and points-based systems, where you can do wellness-type activities to earn points. You, often, the blood screening is a, is a high-point-earning activity in those, in those plans. But, that offers more choice potentially for our employees, that they could kinda pick a wellness solution that aligns to where they wanna go with their care. So, we are looking at that. And then, also, really looking at how we target certain disease management programs. So, if the clinic or on those blood screenings, we're seeing as, you know, we don't see individual employee results, as we shouldn't, that's all private, but we do get kinda the aggregated data. So, if it shows that we have a rising diabetes issue amongst our members, we want the clinic to put on some, to put together some wellness activities, as well as the district, that maybe target that, right? Because that's a potential future high expense for us that we wanna bring under control, as well as just future risk to that person's health and well-being. So, we wanna dig a little bit deeper into some of our key disease management options. Last piece here is that delivery of the benefits and communication. Again, delivery of the benefits, all focused on choices I've talked about, with a lot of variety of health plan options. We wanna increase cost transparency. We actually provide a gift certificate to employees who go to certain providers, at Smart Choice MRI, for example, for an MRI, saves us thousands, and then the employee has a little benefit too. So, programs like that, we really love, and we, we see people making informed decisions based on those sorts of things. And then, just communication. And the broker helps us, as well as the carriers, to put together great communication whenever there's changes or updates. And using the highlighter, that's how you would say it, Don, to, to push that information out in an easy and consistent and frequent manner. Thanks for listening, that was a long one, but there's a lot of information in there, and that's obviously a huge expense in our district. Aside from salary, you're looking at the next biggest driver of our costs and possibly the biggest reason that we're able to retain teachers at such a high rate. So, I appreciate your patience with us and your questions.
Very good. Thank you very much. Andy Sarno, you're up next. Does anybody need a bottle of water, a quick stretch, or anything like that?
There's, there's no end to this.
Everybody good?
I don't, that did not cap me with a time, so.
Homestretch with you, Andy.
Are you okay? I have some financial information, I have what I call a 101. We're leading into our September twenty-third, hundredth annual meeting. So, I do have some information, this is typical. So I do have some information, this is typical that we would be discussing these topics at this point in time. I'm gonna go for present. So, agenda for the twenty-third, we have our resolutions, we have four resolutions that we've historically brought forward, and a little bit of financial information, so bringing that forward this evening. Topics covered, date and location, meeting the electors, the four resolutions, um, just a little bit of that finance 101, and then as well, just a reminder, leading up, the, the, the meeting on September twenty-third is important, statutorily, we have to do it, there is meaning behind it, it's communicating and sharing and even receiving feedback by the constituents of the district. The important meeting is October twenty-eighth, it's when we set our levy, the mill rate, we do a final budget that evening as well. Everything has to come together, I will say this again at that, um, at the end of my presentation tonight, literally, everything has to come together. You say, Andy, how much money can we defees again? I, I don't know yet, our best guess at this point in time, our best estimate based on the information we have, we can do that, it's a couple million dollars, but until we get everything together with our children and our property values and all that, we, we still have some assumptions. So let's see what, uh, the meeting looks like at the hundredth, uh, hundredth annual. Packers turn to hundred, I saw on Baird's logo, they're turning hundreds, so we're, we're not, we're not in the minority. Um, the day and time was determined at last year's meeting, it was set for Monday, September twenty-third, two thousand nineteen. We'll have a six PM registration for our annual meeting, that lasts for about thirty minutes. We will have a public hearing, which is essentially where I have my budget presentation at six-thirty, and then we have what's typically called our annual meeting following that at seven o'clock. Um, and again, districts will do it differently, there will be pauses because it's possible, I'm not gonna occupy the full thirty minutes from six-thirty to seven, we might wait, we might go, I'll get a lot of those nuances and those, those things, how we typically handle that, I'll work with Superintendent Kirkergar, I'll work with Deb, as she has, um, those historical type things. Um, the location, it's been determined already, again, it's, it's going to be at thirteen oh five East Decorum Road, West Bend, five-three-oh-nine-five, which is the high school auditorium, um, and it will be at the Silver Lining Theater. This is a breakout, and it's, uh, again, typically done this way, um, six PM registration, six-thirty, our public hearing, um, which is essentially for the two thousand nineteen-twenty budget, there's an agenda, um, Mr. Hargardt or Designe will, um, call the meeting to order.
Designe will be calling this meeting to order, I can tell you that, I will not be there.
You have a conflict, I was told. Um, and again, I will work, we can, we can coordinate that and make sure we share that. Um, there's an approval of the agenda, despite only being six items long, um, overview of common questions, which will make sure that we address that if people have questions and whatnot. I will be presenting the budget, I'll have a couple of handouts, I'll have a revenue limit worksheet, some graphs, um, some summary information, a little bit of nitty-gritty detailed information as well, um, and a lot of some of the questions that we have tonight with dollar amounts and all of that, that will be finalized. We do need to publish this information in the paper twice, it's class-two notice, one within a week of the meeting, a second one, at least a week in advance, um, but, uh, we'll have the hearing itself where people actually vote and whatnot, and then we'll adjourn. Pretty typical, I think, uh, those have been, been had it, it's pretty standard, not too riveting, but it, again, it's, it's an important part for the, for communication with the, uh, the community. At seven o'clock, we'll, uh, have another meeting, which will, uh, be the annual meeting itself, um, there'll be a call to order, um, pledge of allegiance, ground rules, again, uh, kind of what, what we typically do at our, in, within our district, um, we will be electing a chairperson, um, and it, it's my understanding that's historically been a board member as well, we can address that and, and finding out who would like to do something like that, but, uh, following, um, statutory guidelines, it's actually handled at that meeting, where somebody would make a motion and second, and following all of those procedural type things. Uh, there will be a state of the district, person yet to be determined, um, I have an idea of who that might be, and, uh, again, we can reach out to you and make sure who that might, uh, be to confirm that. The four resolutions, which are the tax levy, disposal of, uh, assets or disposal of district property, um, your compensation is handled at this meeting every year, even if it stays the same, it's a resolution that's brought forward, um, and the two thousand twenty-one annual meeting date. So let's get into that just a little bit unless there's any questions. This is way too many words for a slide, I put that on there so it can be documented in the public, as Deb posts this meeting, people can read through these and familiarize themselves. The tax levy, it's essentially where we set as a different component of all the things, the tax levy itself is a dollar amount, how much are we asking for? Again, with the information that we, that we have at this point in time, or even leading up to it, since we have to post it publicly through the advertisements and whatnot, we will have that information. It will change, I'm telling you that right now, it, it changes every year, so this is not set in stone, again, it's the best information that we have, we've, we will be filling these dollar amounts in a time, um, appropriately. One of the things, and, and this is the thing, I, um, I don't think I'm quite yet to fill in the dollar amounts, um, I'm working there, I'm getting close, and again, when everything comes together, every, everything will be very clear. Um, trying to find the word, the right wording, presumptuous, predetermined, I think I even threw down a couple of words like preemptive or superseding. We've brought this information forward for your approval at the next meeting, discussing it tonight, bringing it forward for your approval to have these resolutions brought forward. I think that's a little bit, again, what's the right word? Um, just want to make sure that we still allow the public their ability to share at that meeting, their voting on these and whatnot. So, um, I guess I'd be open, I think we've historically brought these forward for your approval, but yet, at the same time, I just want to make sure that we don't stop something that should be open for discussion, do you know what I mean? Yeah, all right, so maybe discussion at the end of this meeting about that. Resolution number two, um, disposal of district property, so anything over five thousand dollars per board policy, um, can be, um, disposed of appropriately, you're giving the administration, Superintendent Kirkergar, myself, the ability to dispose of that. Um, we do follow certain protocol, um, we make sure that, uh, any of those disposals are properly posted on a website, um, we go through an auction service, anybody can bid on them, those people that, uh, watch those types of things, um, and we do a pretty good job doing that. I think people, um, do get rid of things that they don't need, we do our best job that we can, we receive that money, it goes into a district account, why? Because even though the money might have been bought by a department, it's always district money. That's what I use, and what the district uses, when we allow departments and schools to have an allocation, that's a funding source that we can't just give back to that department, so, um, any questions on resolution number two? Number three, board member compensation, sorry, this is a long one, I should have put it on two slides, um, but essentially, at the annual meeting here, we will be determining your compensation, just a heads up, it's two thousand five hundred, uh, per board member, twenty-six hundred dollars for an officer, that was changed in two thousand fourteen-fifteen, so it would have been the fall of two thousand fourteen, when it had been two thousand and twenty-one hundred. Um, so again, um, we'd be bringing this forward for vote on the twenty-third. Further, above and beyond that, is whenever you guys are traveling on behalf of the district, that you're compensated pretty consistently, um, with how all employees are being treated, with expense reimbursements, all of those types of things.
Do you have a background?
Yep.
Just a question, am I getting...
Are you on?
On the compensation, I'm just...
No, no, is your mic on?
Turn my mic on. Sorry, just a quick question on the compensation, a city council member is X and a county board number is X, and I can look it up, but I think there's significantly more, does anybody maybe at the table know, and, or Andy know?
I, I can comment a little bit about that. Um, the board, the school board back in two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen talked about the compensation of this board at length, and it, that was the, the main kind of driver of it, was that our city councilmen, city aldermen get, do get paid significantly more. I'm not saying they get paid a lot, but they might get eight thousand dollars or so. County board members, same deal. So the board back in two thousand thirteen-fourteen, they were, they, they raised that, that amount, and in fact, the next year, tried to raise it again, to something like three thousand and thirty-one hundred. Um, didn't go over well in the community, and that year at the annual meeting, they decided, uh, a, a motion was made that we're gonna keep it the way it is at twenty-five and twenty-six hundred. So, I don't know what the amounts are, but I do know that they are higher. Um, we've added these, these salaries, as Andy says here, since fourteen fifteen, if this, if the dollar amounts you want to put forward to the, um, electorate on the twenty-third, if you want to propose something different, we can discuss that.
No, I think my context of the question where it'd be nice, I'm gonna maybe do myself the research just to make a comment on that, um, prior to maybe voting on this.
I see.
Was the context of my question, just knowing what the city council make and what the county board makes versus what the school board officials make.
I think that, that if you go back and look at discussion from thirteen-fourteen, the argument was, would we be able to attract better school board members if the pay was higher? I think we got a pretty good school board right now, so, I don't know if that argument it, it holds water or not, but that was, that was the discussion back in thirteen-fourteen. Um, but I, I think I can read into what...
I'm just looking for PR points, so...
I, I think I can read into what you're saying, Kurt, so, do we want to, I mean, Andy, I think is looking for a proposal, do we want to go to the, uh, meeting of the electorate with the twenty-five and twenty-six hundred? Do we want to increase that, do we want to reduce it, keep it the same, any thoughts on that? Now's the time to talk about it.
I, I'm in favor of leaving it as is.
And obviously, we can't vote on anything tonight, but I think maybe just hearing discussion and things, and are we voting on, or, not tonight, but before this goes to the electorate, we vote on these resolutions, right, Deb?
Well, and this is to, to Andy's point of concern, that the community ultimately needs to weigh in with an opinion and, uh, a decision on these, but we need to take a proposed resolution for each of these four, so I think we come to a consensus on, this is the proposal with the understanding that the community could still change, uh, if, if they felt it so.
Exactly right, yep.
So, yeah, I think we need to, by the next meeting, come to an agreement on what the wording should be. To Kurt's point, I've got the city council, uh, municipal code up, and alderpersons are paid, uh, four thousand two hundred and thirty-six dollars per year.
That was a little high.
So I'm looking at a document for county board members, and I'm not sure this is accurate, but it is on the county website, county board members receive a salary of five hundred and fifty dollars per month. So you take five fifty times twelve, sixty-six hundred, something like that, is that right?
I can't find the city.
I, I don't, you know, going back to your first resolution, Andy, those are dollar amounts that you need to come to us with.
Correct.
On the second one, that of disposal of public property, that hasn't changed in years, right, Deb?
Right.
So it's really the, it's really the resolution number three on the salaries, and then number four on the time and date of the next meeting, that we need to kind of give Andy some direction to, so that at our next board meeting, we will vote on these. And I'm fine sticking with twenty-five or twenty-six hundred, or even going back to two thousand and twenty-one hundred to free up a few thousand bucks for the district, I don't know if that helps in any budgeting, um, for the district, but, uh, I guess I'm not necessarily proposing that we change, go backwards, but I...
Well, I would not recommend that you go backwards. I mean, I'm not saying you have to go forward, but I wouldn't go backwards. I mean, you certainly want to make sure that anybody can afford to be a board member, and nobody's doing it for the money, but I would not recommend that you go backwards.
Mm-hmm. I'm supportive of, of remaining the same.
Agreed. And again, we're not necessarily voting tonight, but I think you're kind of here in the, some direction, and we'll vote on it next week. The other thing is, you know, jeez, nowadays, it costs money, if you're trying to run a campaign and buy yard signs and things, and so, people could look at this and say, well, if I want to win a school board election, I'm gonna be willing to spend twenty-five hundred bucks to run a campaign and then get, you know, recoup that money if you win, sort of thing, so, um, okay.
Thank you. As indicated, resolution number four, essentially setting the two thousand twenty-one, this is something that we do on an annual basis, every district does it, um, historically, this has been brought forward, um, September, I think that, that's been pretty consistent, we can do it as early as May fifteenth, we can do it as late as October thirtieth, because we could technically have our annual meeting on the same exact night that we're setting the levy and the mill rate and all that, wouldn't advise it, I've done it once and I didn't like it. But, uh, so I, you know, at, in, at this point in time, I think it wouldn't be a bad recommendation to keep with the September meeting in the fall of two thousand twenty, and then, I really don't mind going as early as about July, um, I think June is probably pushing it just a little bit, we're just making more assumptions the earlier we go, but I gotta tell you, from about the middle of July until about the middle of September, there, there's not a lot of difference, and I think it might be a nice communication tool to help bridge into summer if we did something like that.
How about, uh, the twenty-eighth of September, two thousand twenty?
Twenty-eighth?
Yes, the fourth Monday of September.
And that's, would technically be a week after what we, what we typically do. Uh, I'd say typically, we've only, we've only had it on this date, I think, two years ago.
I think last year, we did go a week later. I think we, we had made a, a mistake, and we thought it was gonna be on one day, and we had to change it at the very end because the board had actually changed it, so, Joel, I think you were there last year because it was a week later.
Mm-hmm.
At the board, at the, yeah, committee of the whole.
I think it was on September sixteen.
Or a week earlier, I'm sorry, it was, it was not the same weekend, it was either earlier or later last year than what we normally do, because we had to make some last-minute changes.
I, I, my assumption is this, um, if we continue to use the second and fourth Mondays of the month for meetings, that's how I arrived at proposing the twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth.
September, it's the fourth Monday of that month.
We, we have not had a regular board meeting, we've only had one in September, so typically, same with, with next year, we would propose one regular meeting, no committee of the whole in September, and then the, uh, board, meeting of the electorate, the other one. So it really could be any time in September, I really would recommend to Andy, whatever works best for Andy, as well as you guys, as to when's the best time for that.
I'd be okay on the twenty-eighth, yep, I like that consistent approach.
The time at six-thirty and seven o'clock is, I don't see a problem with that. So why don't we pencil that in for the same time, and then the twenty-eighth of September, two thousand twenty?
Yep.
Um, and again, we'll vote on that, on the ninth, to bring forward.
Yep, exactly.
Andy, with the four resolutions, the electorate will vote on all four of them. On number one, of those four, if they vote no, which ones, is it more of a advisory vote than a binding vote? There's some of them that are binding votes, some of them are advisory votes, I know resolution number one is a advisory vote, the board still has the ultimate decision to do what they believe is best, but you want to certainly take into consideration what the advisory suggests. How about two, three, and four, Deb, maybe you can answer that.
Yep, you, you are correct, so advisory on number one, setting the tax levy, that, that is something that you determine that final amount on October twenty-eighth. Number two, if they said no to it, we would have to be, uh, my, my assumption is, we would be bringing that forward, and I can confirm this on the ninth, if you'd like me to, to report back, my assumption is that any time we dispose of some assets, we would be bringing that forward for your approval, which we'd be bringing at that, on a monthly meeting. Number three, compensation is binding, that is something where they, they do vote on that, and I, I strictly have followed that in my twenty years in doing this. Number four, technically, where we would be bringing a recommendation forward, they could, at the meeting, vote on a different date that would be binding. I don't know if they would have reason or purpose in doing that, if they choose the third Monday on the twenty-first, as opposed to saying, no, let's do it in July, we really like that, then we could, we would certainly accommodate...
And Andy, you are a resident of the district, correct?
I'm not.
You are not.
Nope.
Thought you bought some land in the district.
Uh, just south of here, and right now, I'm a resident of German Town.
Oh, okay.
Well, true.
Well, Don, you are a resident of the district, and I guess the reason I bring that up is because if somebody says, well, why don't we have it on May fifteenth, then as the superintendent and someone extremely close to the district and as a resident, you could speak up and say, well, look, you know, we might not know what the governor's budget's gonna be on May fifteenth, the longer you wait, the more accurate the number, and you can help maybe convince the crowd on why this is put forward that way.
Yep. Excellent insight. Any other questions on the resolutions? Thank you for the input, we will be bringing, bringing that forward for, uh, September Thank you for the input, we will be bringing, bringing that forward for September ninth. Couple finance, I have two formulas, they're pretty straightforward, I call it finance one oh one, let's talk about the revenue limit just a little bit. What we're really doing is taking a three-year average, a membership is a student who lives in our district, they might be open enrolling out, but it's those students residing in our district, we get to count those students, they take a three-year average, we get to add in our summer school, and we get a count, a three-year average, and that dollar amount is, or, excuse me, that, that number of students, that, the number of the membership, the residents, is then multiplied by our per pupil allowance, so that was determined back in nineteen ninety-three when revenue limits were put in place, they literally said, starting now, we're gonna take last year, how much you spent, divided by a three-year average, you're gonna get that amount, and we're gonna control the change, and so we were a low-spending district back in nineteen ninety-three, we're still a low-spending district, primarily because the state's been controlling those increases, we haven't had any operational referendums that have passed in our district, I don't think we've had any referen, operational referendums. Is that accurate? I, I believe, I, I could, couldn't find any history, we have one? Okay, long time. So, you know, as, as we look at that, that's really what it is, so when we take our nine thousand four hundred dollars per student, that per member, multiplied by seven thousand seven hundred and seventy-five FTE members, we get approximately sixty-four million dollars, pretty straightforward, there are some exceptions, there's a few exceptions, and I'm gonna go to the next slide, it's actually a couple million dollars, just shy of that, so as we start to have some, some one-time exceptions to that, if your enrollment is declining, they allow for an exception, and we get about a million dollars because we've been steadily declining, and I'll show that in a minute, but there's about two million dollars of exceptions that we qualify for on an annual basis, but generally speaking, your revenue limit is your number of kids that you're able to count, multiplied by a dollar amount that the state allows, that's your revenue limit. You get some extra grant money, you get to have your football gate receipts, some of that stuff, but the revenue limit's the big overwhelming majority of the money that we receive for operations. And that is pretty much our two thousand eighteen, it's a year ago's information. Now, where does the money come from? So now, I went from sixty-three to about sixty-five million, sixty-five point four million, so that includes those exceptions, 'cause I wanted to use real numbers, so I don't mean to confuse you, but it includes the exceptions, the revenue limit then, it's really coming from the state, which is taxes and other, other areas, plus property taxes. That's, that, that's the two sources. How it gets here, there's a three-tiered formula, and it depends on how property-rich, property-poor you are, those types of things, and I'll talk about that a little bit tonight, if I had a couple extra hours, I'd graph it out and show you. It's actually pretty cool, Lenny thinks that health insurance is cool, but this is even more riveting, but I, I don't like to think revenue limit equals state aid plus taxes, because we get the revenue limit number from the state, we get our state aid from the state, let's redo our formula, it's really the revenue limit minus state aid equals our property taxes. At the end of it, we have an amount left, it's about thirty-four million dollars, and then the state says, you have to levy for that if you want it all. So that's, that ends up in our levy, it's a dollar amount, you take your dollar amount, divided by your property values, we're about a five-billion-dollar district, and we're growing pretty quickly, that's why you get your mill rate. So that's when we take a look at thirty-four million dollars divided by our, our property values, we're sitting at that right around nine dollars for our mill rate, so. Just wanted to share that, those are the two formulas, it's really good to kinda know that, put it in context, but there's a lot that goes into it, so I'm gonna show, share four graphs that I think kinda tell that story about how, how we come up with that. Our first one, and again, graphs, I can play with these, I can make it look really flat, I can make it look very dramatic, all, all the graphs are, are set, they're, they're, they're just representing the dollar amounts here. So when we take a look at our September membership, we've been losing anywhere from seventy-five to a hundred students each and every year, we're graduating more than we're getting in as our four K and five K students, even when we consider any prokeal schools that we receive students from and whatnot, we're, we're, we're getting smaller, okay? So that's one of the factors. Our property value, and, and again, these are estimates for the Green Bar, which is two thousand nineteen, twenty data, but we received information from Barrett the other day, and the state will not formally release the information through the Department of Revenue, our property values until October fifteenth, but Barrett is kind enough to share what they believe, and they're pretty, pretty accurate, so I put a fair amount of stock in that, they're guessing our property values are gonna be going up by seven point one percent for this year. So why is that important? Because depending on how property-rich, property-poor you are, that, that determines how much state aid you get, how much state aid you get determines how much money you need to levy at the end of it, right? It's all starting to come together a little bit, but I just threw some numbers, and so as we take a look, back in fifteen sixteen, we grew by two point three percent, then we grew by two point four percent, then a little bit in, oop, I'm gonna go back up. I think you guys can kinda see my mouse a little bit on the screen, but as we start seeing, and, and again, these are not dramatic, but they're, they're hundreds of millions of dollars of growth is, is what we're seeing, all of a sudden, we had a six point one percent in seventeen eighteen, eighteen nineteen, it slowed down to about a four point two, but now we're back to a seven point one. Some of that can be determined through a reassessment, if a municipality on a cycle, cyclical basis is reassessed, there can be increases through that, or the other mechanism is through actual growth, or both. So one municipality might be reassessed, another one might have some pretty significant growth, but what the state will be telling us most likely, is that our property value for this current year is in excess of seven point one percent. And again, this is the denominator, when we take that levy, which is the dollar amount, divided by our five point, I think we're upwards of five point two billion dollars now with this growth, that denominator, that's gonna make the mill rate smaller. So again, when we take a look, and if somebody is reassessed, and their home increased by seven point one percent in value, that's different than if we had actual growth and expansion of the values in the district, 'cause then it's a bigger pool upon which we could potentially levy. So when we take a look at the actual mill rate itself, what we like to do as a district, okay? So food for thought, 'cause that's in about two graphs ahead of us. General aid, we are, and again, I did not do this for drama, and by the way, fifteen, sixteen, something happened there, we had a significant decrease, I can guess what it was, you can't ask me because I don't know specifically, and I don't wanna answer it, I can get back to you if you'd like, but something happened there. Something happened in that prior year that caused the, the general state aid to dip, it rebounded, that does happen, I know districts when they sell property, when they spend a little bit more money in one year, that will impact future years on an exception basis, something happened in fifteen sixteen, but since seventeen eighteen, eighteen nineteen, and now nineteen twenty, I'm projecting that we're having a fairly steady decline, why is that? Number one, if you're students, so we should probably be getting less state aid, second of all, is our property value increasing faster than those across the state? Possibly even probably seven point one percent, I'd say yes, that's probably happening, and what happens then is when you're more property-rich, the state says, you can raise it yourself through taxes, we're gonna give you less in state aid. So less students, less state aid, potentially, depending on the whole variable in the formula that I showed, maybe more, maybe less in property taxes. My guess is because we have fewer students, that we have a fairly flat taxation rate, but again, it's dependent on how much we're defusing, how many students will actually show up the third week of September that we're counting, and all of those other different variables, but a pretty consistent decline in state aid, please.
I think that third week in September, when we do the count, that's why the fourth week in September, we have annual meeting.
We, so a district our size, we would not know that count, even, even if we took, even if on September third, is that Tuesday, September third, even if on September third, we said, let's figure out how many kids we have, we wouldn't figure it all out, because of open enrollment and all those other variables, we, we really don't know, we, so when I said the Department of Revenue will give us our, our actual property values on October fifteenth, that's right about when we're gonna know how many students we have for sure. So, yeah, I'd, I'd love to say, well, by October, or September twenty-eighth of next year, we should know that information, right? We won't, plus, plus we have those publications that we have to have, which are at least a week ahead of time, we start compromising the data, so we're still, we still have assumptions, we still have estimates of that.
We will have some school data available for you on our next meeting, so that isn't by any means complete, but we'll, we'll tell you if McLean is up or down, we'll tell you if Fair Park is up or down, the high school, based on actual people in the seat on the first day of school this year compared to the first day of school last year.
Yeah, I wanna make sure enrollment versus membership, two different things, so. Last one, mill rate, so, and, and I, I gotta tell you, and I, I wish I would've put the headers, 'cause I wrote them on here, I can give those to you, if we go back to fourteen, fifteen, our mill rate was eight dollars and sixty-one cents, it then jumped up to eight dollars and seventy-six cents, why was that? Again, you saw that graph that the state aid went down that year, well, we offset it by levying more money, because we, we levied to the maximum allowable amount, then a little bit of a drop, we were back down to eight dollars and sixty-five, big drop in seventeen, eighteen, we were down to eight dollars and fifteen cents, and then last year, we were at seven dollars and ninety-seven, and then that's at this point in time where I'm proposing, based on prior discussions, when I presented the initial budget back in June, that I think the board had a little bit of an appetite to try to hang right around that eight-dollar mark. So proposal, at this point in time, with the best information that I have, seven dollars and ninety-seven cents, with a balanced budget, again, you know, the, this is, if, if we're levying to the maximum allowable authority, we can't levy any more than that unless we defees debt, which doesn't help on our operational side in being able to afford more textbooks or teachers to keep class sizes and all that, it doesn't impact that, we can talk about debt, which I have as a slide a couple from now, but flat mill rate for this next year is the proposal, unless you guys direct me otherwise, which we can talk about between now and October twenty-eighth, okay?
And maybe, one comment on that, just prior history, you go back now five years' history, if I'm remembering from the referendum presentation, the mill rates for the last ten years are not as low as eight dollars, so I'm just putting that in context. So these are the lowest mill rates, I think, in the last ten to twelve years, not alone the last five years.
And I'd be happy to include more years at the annual meetings handouts, I actually taken eleven by seventeen, I have these four graphs on the inside of it, and I've historically given eight to ten years, so I just wanted to make sure.
That's what I would comment on, that, that would be good for the electorate to see that the mill rate is the lowest it's been in twelve years.
Thank you.
Especially when you're, when a referendum just failed, that would've increased the mill rate by what, ten cents, fourteen cents? So that mill rate would still be lower than it was ten years ago, I don't know, just, this is, just a comment.
This is a graphical representation, I call it the saw blade effect, I'm not saying it's a catchy title, but you'll kinda see what I mean, so just date back to ninety-four, ninety-five, that's right around the time when I said that revenue limits were put in place, let's say we had a balanced budget in ninety-four, ninety-five, historically speaking, since that point in time, revenues have been going up by two to two and a half percent. Back then, we also, right around then, we, the, the state implemented the QEO, the Qualified Economic Offer, that said that minimum of three point eight percent for bargained wages, and including health insurance and benefits. Districts weren't always giving that, I remember many years where we allowed a four, four point two, four point four percent, we're essentially living beyond our means just a little bit, and what happened then is you created a divergent, so we have the blue line is revenue, that first kinda orangish line, or it is orange, there's a gap when we go from fourteen, fifteen to fifteen, sixteen, because now we don't have a balanced budget anymore, so what did we do to counteract that? Is, we adjusted the expenditures and we brought it down, we made reductions, so that's why all of a sudden, we have our first little tooth of the saw blade, and now we have a new gray expenditure line, so we have that same two to two and a half percent revenue line, but now the, the expenditures are going up again, I'm gonna click on this in purple, now all of a sudden, if we, and, and I jumped forward to eighteen, nineteen on purpose, we actually had a deficit last year of about one point five million dollars is what the budget approved was, and what, what happens then is that you, you don't have that tooth, you don't have that second tooth, because you don't have a balanced budget, there's a gap there. So if we then fast forward then to two thousand nineteen, twenty, what does that look like? Because we're on the same strategic trend for expenditures, we're not really just cutting that to get to that tooth, because we're really trending one year even forward, is that we actually, this year, in cutting approximately two million dollars to bring forward a balanced budget, we've actually almost cut two years' worth of expenditures to bring forward that budget. So we don't have a operational referendum, that's the only thing that would really impact the blue revenue line, unless the state allowed for more revenue to come in, and this year, based on the proposed budget, or not the proposed budget, the actual budget that was passed, line item vetoed, it went up by two point two percent, so our, our revenue trend is, still exists, we've made expenditure reductions in order to bring forward that balanced budget, does that make sense? And if you trend that over about ten or twelve years, you keep having reductions to make your balanced budget. Any questions on that? Got a lot of compliments this morning at the staff meeting on this one, so. Reiteration, we've talked a lot about this in my time here, my six months that I've been in the district, I've broken out the non-referendum, the referendum in total, both the principal and interest, we have total district-wide debt of about thirty-seven point nine million dollars, we have defeased, you can't defees non-referendum debt, we just have to pay for that as we go, we are making payments on that annually, but we have defeesed five point nine million dollars of referendum debt, that's where we're holding it in an interest-bearing account, I haven't taken account for the interest, it is actually earning interest, we'll, we'll pay less than that, but it's, it's, it's in an account, we've defeesed five point nine million dollars over the course of three fiscal years, so our true outstanding principal and interest is approximately thirty-two million dollars in the head as of July first of two thousand nineteen. I shared this information back, and I think I had it as of, I don't know if I had the actual principal and interest, 'cause I think this was before we made our payments in April, when I presented the debt information, but anyways, thirty-two million dollars.
Andy, what happens to the defeat, to the money that's sitting there, is, is it, we wait until the balance of the outstanding debt is down to five point nine million, and then it's paid, or is that a fund that's used to make the principal and interest payments when due, how does that work?
So the strategy behind it is that since we can't pay for it early, much like we could do for a home mortgage, where, we, it sits in an interest-bearing account, the amount is then paid when, when the balance of the mortgage, or not the mortgage, but the debt is paid, but what we do is we strategize, and how, and we project how much money will be in that defeesed account, and then we would levy less that final year, or that final multiple years, I mean, that's really what we're doing, is at the tail end, when we pay Badger and Silverbrook's money off, we're really carving money out of those last couple of years where we wouldn't have to levy for that debt, so. It just sits there until the day that we paid for it, whether the five point nine is there or not, but we will use that at that point in time.
So it helps, but pretty much only at the end?
At the end, correct, yep.
Thanks.
So technically, oh, please.
Go ahead.
Andy, what is our rough annual referendum pay-down number?
I don't have that amount off the top of my head, yeah, but if you'd like, when I, I can report that back on the-
Yeah, I think it would be similar to Kurt's point on, on the historical mill rate conversation, I think it would be good information to present to folks that this number, not including the interest that it's earning, represents X months of early payoff, for example, just to, and, and, you know, put a, that, that twenty twenty-eight, twenty-nine target date that we had talked about during the referendum, help bring this in a little bit and give folks perspective that, yes, we've got money salted away, and this is the, the positive impact it's gonna have for us.
And the, the other thing to consider too, is that we're, Badger and Silverbrook are a large majority of that, that's outstanding yet for the next ten years, there are multiple other issues, debt issues that are part of that, so we had some QZABs, QSCABs, some of those very, very low-interest rate governmental issues, so some of them are pieced in, where we're not paying anything right now, just interest, which, which again, is very low, but there's a balloon payment for maybe the last two or three years of that, they, Barrett pieced in some of our debt to make sure that our actual levy for our debt was fairly flat, and so I don't know if there's a typical dollar amount that we annual on an average ba, or levy on an average year, but I can get you some information that kinda outlines on an annual basis how much that looks like, I pulled it all together, so maybe I can just share that information with you guys.
Andy, is any of the current refer-
Andy, is any of the current referendum debt callable? Is any of it, there's no ability to refinance any before they expire?
I'd made a connection in a prior district with Ellers, and Ellers does not have a very strong presence in our district, or, excuse me, in the state. They're trying to regain that, so I had that connection in a previous district, this was a couple of months ago, saying, "Andy, can we swing by and say hi?" Sure, go on and say hi. And he did point out that we do have one more opportunity on some debt where it's callable, and depending on interest rates, it might be advantageous for us to refinance at that point in time.
Would, that would also be another time that you could use that 5.9 million dollars. If you had enough money in the defeasement area, you could pay off the loan when it's callable, is that correct?
I like that idea, I'm not sure of the legalities behind how we can use that defeased debt, if it can be pulled out of its current interest-bearing account. What I do know is that we would want to find a balance between how much that defeezed debt is earning in interest, how much we would, what the new interest rate, if we were able to refinance a chunk of money, what we'd be able to have. So, I think in working with Baird, we'd make sure we found the most advantageous plan for the district moving forward. I'm sure we would explore that though, if it's possible.
I have one more debt question. Sorry to interject, one more point. What if school, so businesses, their debt, which, if we're quoting to the business world, $32 million in debt, to an equity ratio of a stock value of X, and you determine what your debt-to-equity ratio is? And do school districts, I mean, our debt to the equity, we don't have stock, but we have property value, and what are, is there a calculation that school districts use to the debt to the property value of all their schools use, and is that a communicatable number?
Great, great question. There's a statutory guideline that says you can borrow up to 10% of your property values, which again, we're at a $5.2 billion, I can't imagine a $520 million issuance. But, there's districts that are, I mean, you know, Verona's, and there's a couple of big ones that have happened, but what I've done in such situations, and if we go out to referendum again for a debt issuance, I would compare us to the city, I'd compare us to MPTC, I'd probably even compare us to somebody like E.W. Oshkosh, or some other, what are some other comparables, just to put it in frame of reference, because people often think 32 million's a lot of money. Well, 32 million is principal and interest, you don't say your $200,000 mortgage with the bank is really a million, because that's what you're going to pay over the 30-year life expectancy of that. It's a $200,000 mortgage. I know that we have our board policy that says we talk about both hand-in-hand, but there's not really a ratio that we talk about. But I do like to bring up some comparisons, because when you say that we're, and our general fund is a $70 million, we're a $70 million business, you think about all the other grants and all the other funding sources, we're a $100 million company, and we've got debt of $32 million, including interest, that's pretty phenomenal. And, there's also a statutory guideline that says, if we decided to go out of business, and there's actually a district in the state talking about it right now, we'd absorb by all the other school districts that touch us, that neighbor us, and they incur the debt. So, our assets and our liabilities all get absorbed by all the neighboring districts. So, for us to go belly up and defeat, or default on some debt, it's pretty impossible. But it doesn't, I don't know if that answers your question.
Well, it answers, and I was just doing the math, so it's 0.6%. So, if you say, our 32 million divided by 5 billion is 0.6, and you said 10%.
Up to 10%.
So, we're, we're good.
Yep.
Plus, 0.6 is less than anybody.
Yeah.
Anybody in our area. So, you talk about Slinger, you talk about Germantown, you talk about Cedarburg, you talk about Kewaskom, Hartford, points, and I don't know about Hartford, because they don't have much debt, but 0.6 is less than anybody, and even if we would have passed the referendum, we still would have been less than everybody, okay? Even with the new $40 million referendum, or $48 million referendum, or whatever the number was, our debt ratio compared to the $5 billion was still less than anybody else around us.
I think we need to just do a better job of communicating this to our, to our tax base, because 32 million, as we all sit here and say, "Well, that doesn't sound like a lot." Well, you know, the city has at least 10 million more, maybe 15 million more in debt, and there's a headline in the newspaper that says their debt is dwindling. Well, compared to ours, our debt is sawdust, I mean, compared to the city. And the valuation of the city is not 5.2 billion, because they don't have the Village of Jackson, and Newburgh, and the town of Trenton, and the town of West Bend. But the city somehow does a lot better job than we do of communicating what their debt is, and painting that rosy picture that it's dwindling, it's, you know, and, I don't know, we just, if we could somehow do a better job of really communicating that we're sitting in a good spot here. Look at that non-referendum debt with interest of only 200,000, what would the interest rate be on? I mean, that rate's got to be below 1% if that's what you're showing for interest. So, that debt, even though it's still 4.6 million, that's good debt, if you're at an interest rate of less than 1%. So, anyway.
Thank you. I still have, based on the initial budget proposal that was brought forward to you back in June, there was $2.7 million of defees debt as a part of that, still keeping that mill rate flat at $7.97. Again, as all this information comes together, we would be bringing that forward, I would recommend continuing that trend, but just as a reminder for that. And again, you're going to be setting all that information on October 28th.
So, Andy.
Go ahead.
Just to make sure I'm seeing that number correctly then, so, with that initial budget proposal of the possible defeasance of 2.7, that's on top of the 5.9 showing in the table.
That's on top of it, as well as, I did not include, because this is information as of July 1st, it does not include fall and spring payment and interest, which again, that's another several million dollars, I think about 3 million, 2, 2.5, 3 million dollars of principal and interest payments, so.
Okay, perfect.
We're going to be levying, again, about $5.2 million of money, both for our current payments, as well as the defeases, as is recommended, as would be approved by you at the end of October.
And that was going to be my question exactly, you look at this chart in six months, that 32 million's going to be less than 30, quite a bit less than 30.
Correct. Yep, yep. We do, well, fall is typically a big interest, we make very few payments on principal in the fall, typically April is where we, so, within the next 12 months, absolutely. I think we've had quite a bit of discussion, I'm open for more. Still early.
Thank you for the thoroughness.
Yeah, this, you know, and, and again, I wasn't, this is not meant, if Kurt knows all of this already, I apologize, but I hope that if, and there's people watching, or there's wonderful people in the audience, I hope that we can kind of continue to build this education. I do consider myself an educator, though I don't sit in a classroom every day and deal with our wonderful kids, but I hope you learned a little bit from it, and if you continue to like, we can do a Finance 102, and I can do that three-tiered funding formula, it is pretty cool, and so. I have a lot of analogies, yeah, it's pretty cool, so.
Lenny's presentation was good, yours, I think it was right up there.
I'll let him know that, I'll text him in a minute. Oh, he is? That's the other thing too, it's my understanding, we own one of those tabletop, they call it, it's kind of a chutes and ladders for school finance, and I mean, I know that that was not cheap, I am not a certified person in it, but I have a lot of colleagues that are. If you guys would ever be open, we could even have one of those, where we could invite some community stakeholders, and get three or four of those board games, there's people that do that and facilitate that, so. Roll the dice, literally. I would agree.
Good.
Anything further? I think I have what I need to present information on the 9th. Thank you.
I'll just make a couple of comments about the meeting of the electorate. It is a meeting of the electorate, it is not an official school board meeting, although I encourage all of you to come if you can, I know there's several of us who can't. In the past, we have had one of our attorneys come and serve as a parliamentarian, we haven't done that for the past couple of years. I don't know that we need to do that, unless anyone feels otherwise, I think Don has served on, or has been a member of several of these annual meetings over his time, and can serve as our parliamentarian. He's a member of the district, obviously. If we have our attorney come, it's, I mean, you're looking at a thousand bucks easy, depending on how long the meeting goes and things, so, does that seem okay? And, I, like I said, I will not be there, so, maybe Don can call the meeting to order as a parliamentarian? Is that?
Nancy, based on being vice chair, maybe that would be, if Nancy could call the meeting to order, put agenda over there, and I would see that. I think at our last meeting, we officially appointed Chris as the parliamentarian, so if that's the case, and I don't care if it's down or not, but you certainly, I have been in many, many meetings, and chaired many meetings, so I have a pretty good understanding of the procedure, but if somebody else wants to, and I have to edit it all, that's how I do it as well.
And you'll, the electors will elect a chairperson, I don't know if you remember when we had the sale of the Jackson property, you know, the electors are all here, and there's nominations and so forth, and there's a vote, typically at the annual meeting, the vote is by standing up, and there's a sign-in sheet to make sure the people who are there are residents. I'm kind of walking through this, because I'm not going to be there, and I hope that people who are feel comfortable with how it works, but, I mean, typically, we've had the board members set up on stage, but you really don't even need to do that. If you don't want to sit up on stage, you don't have to, this is a meeting of the electorate. The people, if there's a, is there a, I was going to see, is there a public comment? It's not on the agenda.
Yeah, there was.
The hearing of, the public hearing of the budget?
Everyone at the resolution, everyone coming to the table.
Okay. And as far as, again, if someone comes to speak, they should be speaking to the entire crowd, and so, not necessarily directing questions at you, because you're there as a member of the electorate, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
Question about that, so last time, I feel like Tim or someone had a clock for us, right? We weren't having to manage the time that someone was speaking.
We've done it, we've sold it. We use the last hour, and we remember asking the question.
I think you had it up there last year though, I think you did, I remember that, and I think we set maybe three minutes as opposed to two, or, but whatever we set was the, you had that up, and I don't know if anybody had to be.
I like the clock, because.
I do too.
Having it there ensures that we don't need it.
And we do it there, and it's there.
Well, and then it's not me on my phone trying to time something and fiddling around personally, I would prefer to have the clock.
Any other questions on, and last year's meeting, and probably two years ago's meeting, is still, I'm sure, out there on video, and that was kind of how I prepared for the meeting that I went to. So, if you want to pull up the video, see how it works, I would assume following that format is what we'll do, but again, I won't be there, so it's up to you guys.
Right, as we talked about, I'm traveling, so I won't be here either.
Yep.
Everyone else?
Kurt?
Yes, I'm 90%, I have the procedure a week before that, flying back Saturday, so I should be in attendance.
Okay, great. Any other questions or concerns, or anything we need to discuss? Our next school board meeting is Monday, September 9th, and school starts on the 3rd, next Tuesday, and it's almost 8 o'clock, so I will call this meeting adjourned. Thanks for being here, and I'm glad we started at 5:30, because it's, we got a lot in, but it's not too late.
We're going to try to keep it 90 minutes, so, went a little longer tonight than normal, but we're going to, we want to not waste your time, but we want to also be appreci, very conscientious of your time, so we're going to try to make these 90 minutes if we can.
We had a lot of good topics tonight.
Absolutely.
All right, we stand adjourned.